On our town. If you would like to, please join me for the flag salute. Um, because do we, we don't, okay, do we have a flag? There we go. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, will the city clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Vice Mayor Goldstein.
Here.
Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
So Member Matthews.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Um, so if you wish to make a comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you are logged on to the Zoom meeting webinar, click raise your hand when it is time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak. City staff will unmute you and you will have two minutes to comment. If you are accessing the meeting by phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is time for public comment, city staff will request you to unmute and you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted and you will have two minutes to comment. So next we have early communicate oral communications. And this fifteen minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any requests that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council at this time are limited to two minutes and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you're calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. Do we have anybody for this early oral communications?
We do. Um, our first speaker will be Joanne and then next we will have Jean.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joanne, please. Joanne. I see you're unmuted, but we don't hear you. Okay, um, we will try Jean and come back to Joanne, okay? Go ahead, Jean, you'll have two minutes.
Um, hi, um, I appreciate the opportunity. Um, I read an article that was in the November issue about the human rights commissioner commissions, um, and the concern with the homeless. I know that two things are on the agenda, but I was hoping to, um, prioritize the need for housing up until those points of motels. And, um, you know, all of that being secure like, like tonight. You know, yesterday, yesterday, like, like the in between time, if there's anything we can do, I would like to, um, be a part of that, help to get that going. I interact with the homeless people often and I have for the past three years that I've lived here. I am a house, um, person. Um, and my concerns have been growing just desperate. And, um, I've, I, I see another opportunity for hope here and I know that Humboldt County can do it. I, I saw comments on the failures and the attempts to help homeless people being like humbugged. And I just know that, um, that, that right this minute, there are people who need to just get a motel room to get the bugs off of them. There are homeless people available to stay with those people. They're asking to stay with those people so they can suffer less. Just for that twenty-four hour period. So there's, there, and for the community to be involved, um, is, is an awesome opportunity for us to help them through this period while we're getting this together for them. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay, Joanne, did you want to try one more time? Doesn't look like she has, um, a speaker now, a microphone. So, uh, taking any other public comment or items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no other public comment there.
Okay, thank you. And I apologize, Joanne, if you can, um, if you could, if you can unmute later, if that works out, then we can take your comments. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Um, so all matters, next we have consent calendar. And all matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So we have A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. B, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. C, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of December first, two thousand twenty-one. D, a bi-weekly report on general warrants. E, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. F, adopt resolution number two hundred and twelve dash twenty-four, approving application for grant funds from the California State Parks Rural Recreation and Tourism Grant Program for Carlson Park Improvements. Assessors parcel numbers five zero seven dash five three one dash zero one two and five zero seven dash one four one dash zero five zero. G, adopt resolution number two one two dash thirty-six, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata, providing for workers' compensation coverage for certain city volunteers pursuant to three three six three dot five of the California Labor Code. And H, adopt ordinance number one five five four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata recommending the housing for homeless combining zone, waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only. And I know, um, we'll be pulling item H for discussion. Are there any other items that, um, a council member would like to pull? Uh, what about someone, anyone from staff?
Um, none from staff, but we do have a, a hand raised, so.
Okay.
We do want to pull the last, uh, I think the last agenda item on the Home Key Project.
Yeah, that's H, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I started with that, so we're just looking for.
I'm so sorry, I was reading something. My apologies.
No, that's okay. Well, no worries, we're just looking for any additional ones.
All right, Jim, did you have an item from the consent calendar you wanted to pull?
And I don't have the number, but I, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. Um, I believe it's the October meetings, uh, the minutes. And it's just for a clarification. Um, and because I've seen it in other instances and I'm just trying to understand the situation where, uh, documents have been destroyed. And I'm just wondering if those documents still stay around in the digital format and it's just simply destroying the actual physical documents to make room or, and that would be my main question at this point. And also I guess it would be additional one if they are completely destroyed. What did it encumber? I mean, what did it mainly encumference as far as that goes?
Okay, so do we just, um, that's kind of a, that's a, should we pull that and then discuss it or answer that question?
Um, I'd have to go back and look at the list for October. So, I mean, the short answer is, um, our records destruction is typically guided by state law. Um, it is designed around records, um, you know, storage capacities. Um, in truth, a lot of our files are now stored much longer digitally. But it, I'd have to go back and I'd be happy to talk with you offline, Jim, about the list.
Oh, yeah, I can get back to you offline about that, Karen, too. It's just for me trying to understand it because I've seen there's been a few meetings where it's happened and I just, more than anything, wanted to get up to speed on it.
Yep, happy to share that with you.
All right, when we don't need, no need to pull that then.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So Karen will follow up with you after that. Um, any, any other hands raised?
We do. Carol, did you have an item you wanted to pull from the agenda?
Yes, I'd like F pulled, please.
Okay. All right, so we've got F and H that are polled, any others? All right, so if not, can I have a motion for items A through E and G?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar items A through E and G.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by, sorry, Councilmember Matthews, I live on a busy street, and a second by Councilmember Watson. Um, so we'll do a roll call vote because we're on Zoom, so, um, Councilmember Matthews.
Hi.
Councilmember Watson.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Goldstein.
Hi.
And Councilmember Schaefer.
Hi.
Okay, motion passes. Oh, I vote aye, sorry. And, um, in case you can't tell, I'm also super congested and not feeling well, so I'm probably not going to be a hundred percent eloquent tonight. Not that I ever am, but it's going to be a little worse. All right, um, so let's go ahead and go to item F for discussion. So, um, I'm assuming that we go to Carol.
Yeah, Carol, did you have a specific question about F?
Um, and I, I talked to Emily about this and the issue was that, um, in, in there, it talked about how much outreach the city had done. And guess who they didn't outreach to? The property owners who live next door, which is me. Uh, and I feel this is a, something that needs to be done because I, I don't know why, you know, whatever it is the city is doing that is close to me, I'm not getting noticed. And I'm not, you know, and this is, it's extremely important. I, you know, I have problems with people coming through the park and coming onto my property all the time. And I have things I'd like to say and I just couldn't get it. I say I spent quite a bit of time talking to Emily and, and she said that they just haven't done any outreach in a while. So that's mainly what I was involved in was to, that you, you need to work on some notice changes so I can get noticed. I'm outside the city limits, but I am in the city sphere of influence and it's just, so, okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you, Carol. So is there more discussion on this item?
Yeah, it seems like, it's almost like every project now that comes before us. Um, we're getting feedback that, um, people aren't getting noticed. And, uh, you know, in some cases, there's not enough public input opportunities. So it's something I was thinking about, um, you know, maybe it's something we should, uh, agendize for a future discussion is, um, really taking a look at our, uh, public outreach process and, um, policies. And, um, you know, I think maybe we need to, uh, come up with some new and creative ways to, to reach people. Yeah, because, uh, you know, I mean, it'd be different if it was just like one project here or there, but it really seems like every, every project now. And I know, um, you know, sometimes we might get a couple hundred people to participate, uh, you know, over time on a certain project. But then I think about, you know, there's eighteen thousand people in the city. And, um, even if we get a couple hundred participate, it might seem like a lot, but that's actually a really small sample size. So, um, yeah, you know, I think, uh, it would be, be good of us and appreciated by our constituency if we worked on that.
Okay, any other, um, that's definitely something we can, we can talk about for a future agenda item, for sure. So for this, for item F, do we, is there, um, a motion on item F?
I'll move to approve item F.
A second.
Okay, we have a, um, first by Councilmember Watson and a second by Councilmember Schaefer. So I'll go ahead and do the roll call vote. Um, Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goldstein.
Aye.
And Councilmember Matthews.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, okay, so item H. So, um, I thought we did have a very robust, um, discussion last night with the planning commission, um, which I think was appreciated by both, um, groups to be able to just to have that time to really ask a lot of questions, um, and have a great discussion, which we did. So I thought just, um, to start, since it's awkward because we're on Zoom, I'll just call on each council member, we'll kind of go back to how we did it when we were first elected and all on, all on Zoom, um, earlier in the year. And we'll just start with each person's thoughts or what they want to talk about on the matter and then we can kind of jump into a more popcorn style discussion. Um, so go ahead and start with, um, Vice Mayor Goldstein.
Thank you. Um, I don't have a lot of, uh, thoughts on this. I, I think that when we had the discussion on the fifteenth and then, as you said last night, we, we had a very extensive and robust discussion, um, with the planning commission that, um, you know, all parties got to share their thoughts on this process, on the project. Um, we, at this point, I feel like I've heard a lot of input. Um, I do want to clarify that I think that, um, there is a misconception, maybe, that I've heard that this is just like, kind of came out of nowhere. Um, I know the council at least, or at least I can speak for myself, um, has heard about this project and had in-depth discussions about it since, um, I want to say late August, early September. Um, and so just, just so that everybody, you know, listening in knows, this is not a flippant decision. This is something that, you know, we have all thought very deeply about, um, as we do with all of our projects. Um, you know, we take our jobs very seriously. Um, so I mean, I, I think, um, this is a really important project. We talk all the time about needing to get our houseless neighbors inside in housing. Um, and I think it's our job to put, get those roadblocks out of the way so that we have, you know, great organizations like Arcade House Partnership and Danko stepping up and saying that they want to do this. Um, so I don't really have much to add other than that. Um, you know, I, I know everybody has thoughts and wants to share. Um, and yeah, and so I'm, I'm ready to move forward whenever, at any point. So, um, I'll just, I'll let you all share.
Okay. And, um, thank you. And before we move on to the next person, I just want to clarify, I think that, um, probably, um, Vice Mayor Goldstein and Councilmember Watson probably knew about this a little bit ahead because you guys do sit on the housing and the homeless committee. See if you guys did have a heads up, but, um, you know, we didn't, as a group, you know, we, we've kind of, it's, it's one of our goals that we've been talking about for housing, but I don't think that we really talked, talked about it as a group until a little more recently. But just, just to be clear, so people don't worry that, you know, we were having some kind of outside conversations and knowledge. It kind of came to us at different points, but definitely one of our top, top goals, so.
Thank you for clarifying that, yeah, just, yeah, just to be clear, we were not all talking about it. Um, my conversations were with staff and yes, during the housing and homelessness group that myself and, uh, Councilmember Watson are on. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, Councilmember Schaefer, would you like to jump in next?
Yeah, um, I'm just probably going to echo a little of what Councilmember, uh, Vice Mayor Goldstein said as well and kind of just reiterate some of the points that I said back in December. But, um, housing is housing and I ran on a platform that was, you know, housing first. Um, what can we do to build housing in this community? I, I feel like if we don't move forward with this, it's a lost opportunity of a benefit that we are providing to the entire county. Um, and I think a lot of people have definitely put the concern out there that, uh, you know, this might not only house people from Arcata, which I think is a valid concern and we definitely want to help folks living in Arcata, but housing is a countywide issue and houselessness is a problem all across Humboldt County right now. And if we can house somebody from Eureka, if we can house somebody from Riedel, I am more than happy to let them into our community because we are finding somebody a safe place and a roof over their head. And I think that if we don't approve these projects, it's denying something to our entire county that we desperately need, um, and just opening up the door for, you know, the state to come in and, you know, tell us what to do and how to build it and regurgitate, you know, a bunch of similarly, you know, sized units that we don't even really have any say in down the line if we don't act now. So, um, you know, I really, and just want to also thank from our meeting last night with the planning commission, um, just the really comprehensive overviews that we got from both Krista and Darlene from Arcade House and from Danko, um, and just the information that they provided us and their, you know, commitment to these projects. And, you know, if you've heard them speak on these projects, you know that they are committed to making a positive change in our community and getting, you know, space to get people housed. Um, so I'll kind of stop there and just, you know, overall agree with Vice Mayor Goldstein. I'm ready to move forward whenever. Um, I feel really comfortable with this project. And again, yeah, all of us probably knew about it at different times. I've, um, the liaison to Arcade Houses Board, so I heard about it a while ago too and had had some discussions with staff and stuff and, you know, was getting excited about these projects. And so to see them before us now and kind of feel like we're lacking momentum. It's, we, we need this housing people and our, our community will be so much better for it. And I also, sorry, last thing I want to add, um, I, I also feel like there's really a dehumanizing misconception happening from a lot of people that have made comment about this, that, um, you know, people that are trying to find housing or people that are homeless and becoming housed are going to somehow be a blight on their neighborhood and, you know, causing problems and ruckus and, you know, making it a bad place to live. I mean, these are people trying to find a home and make their lives better. And, you know, I, I, that sounds like the perfect neighbor to me, you know, somebody that wants to better themselves in their community and have a place to live and be a part of that group. And so I think also we really need to be cautious, um, and think about, you know, the people that are going to be living in these spaces, they're, they're our neighbors, they're our community members, they are human. So, um, with that, you know, thank you guys so much and, uh, yeah, you know where I stand.
Great, thank you. Um, Councilmember Matthews?
Hi, um, I won't talk, um, long. I do want to echo what Vice Mayor Goldstein and Councilmember Schaefer, um, said. You know, this council, I feel, really does see, um, the housing issue as a huge opportunity. I know I personally am a liaison to Kuna, um, Councilmember Watson and Councilman, and Vice Mayor Schae, uh, Goldstein, um, are housing liaisons. Goldstein are housing liaisons. Councilmember Schaefer is, works with Arcade House Partnership. I think this has been a really important goal for this council. With that, I do want to say that, you know, I spend, you know, some time in in Valley West. I do talk to people out there. I've gone to events that Kuna has sponsored at the Red Roof Inn. I understand the community that Valley West is trying to build. I really appreciate and and see your goal and vision for this vibrant community and these things are not mutually exclusive. One can cohabit with the other. I think that, you know, this is really, it's an amazing opportunity that doesn't come very often. And I do really appreciate all the emails that we've gotten, all the feedback we've gotten from the planning commission, all the people that have commented, all the people that I've talked to. I know that it's a passionate issue. People have strong feelings. And it's not something that we're being flippant about. It's being considered, but I think it's a, it's a really great opportunity.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Watson?
Yeah, I'll just mention really quick, it's kind of funny that everyone's, you know, mentioning that I'm on the housing committee because I think you guys actually removed me from it. So I think Stacy's on the committee now, if I'm not mistaken. So let's see. My first question was, was there, did we say something about fifty-five years with this project? Is there, is that referenced somewhere in the fifty-five year project?
Yeah, the the regulatory agreement would be based on a fifty-five year term of affordability. And that was approved at your December fifteen meeting when you approved the two loan agreements with Arcade House and Danko.
Okay. And are there some wetlands around those properties?
I'm not aware of wetlands on the properties. We
I didn't know if that area behind it or like the camps are and stuff. Maybe it's just like riparian zone. And then will the construction workers on the project be paid prevailing wage? Is that part of the requirements of the funding?
I am not sure about that. I can get back to you on that.
Okay.
Many, many of the HCD funded grants do require prevailing wage, both federal and state.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of presuming that it does. I just wanted to check because it did seem like it was one of the requirements of a ministerial permit. Was that they had to meet that criteria?
I'm getting my, I'm getting my text message from Darlene and Chris, both are saying yes, state prevailing wage required.
That's excellent, excellent. Yeah, and I do want to apologize for taking up time with these questions. I did try adamantly today to get my questions answered by staff, but I was not not responded to. They were not available to help me. So it, you know, kind of hampered my ability to to do my job. But we can, you know, take care of it now, thankfully. Was there a so like an intent to submit an application from the project proponent?
I'm sorry, say that again?
It's like an intent to submit an application. Let's sound right. Before submitting, go ahead.
The application process requires a preliminary meeting, which was held in, I believe it was early November, where the HCD staff verify whether or not you have a viable project description before, you know, moving forward to application.
Okay. Because, yeah, what I'm reading here in the the government code, six, five, nine, one, three point four, housing development approvals. It mentions that before submitting an application for development, subject to the streamlined ministerial approval process, process, the development proponent shall submit to local government and notice of its intent to submit an application.
I believe that's in reference to applications for discretionary projects, and that's a part, I believe that's part of this permit streamlining act, but I'd have to double check that.
Okay. Because, yeah, that, again, that's a, it does say, as described in subdivision C. And then it says upon intent of notice, upon notice of intent to submit an application, the local government shall engage in a scoping consultation with California Native American tribes that have traditional and cultural affiliation with the geographic area. Is that something that we were able to do?
I I believe you're citing Public Resources Code. Is that correct?
This is I believe it's six, five, nine, one, three point four.
Government code?
Yeah. Planning and zoning, planning and land use.
Yeah, it, I I'm not exactly sure which, you know, code section you're in exactly. I mean, I I know you cited the 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 section number to me, but, you know, government code is, you know, thousands of pages long, and I don't have them all memorized. But what I can tell you is it sounds like, based on what you're telling me, is that those are the procedures that are associated with discretionary review of projects. And it sounds, but, you know, I'd have to dig into it, but it sounds like, you know, the the steps that are required for, you know, consultation associated with Sequin. I believe that was implemented based on AB fifty-two.
Okay. Yeah, and basically, it's all, you know, development proponent may submit an application for development that is subject to the streamlined ministerial approval process provided by the subdivision if it meets the following standards. So I thought, you know, in regards to the ministerial permit conversation, that's what I was kind of referencing this stuff to. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, unfortunately, the way that the government code is written, there are sections within the planning law that are specific to counties. There are sections that are specific to, you know, other other types of cities. And I just, I'm not, you know, without looking at it and studying it, I can't really respond to what that portion of government code is referring to. But it sounds, again, it sounds like it's the permit streamlining act, potentially. And that is a, you know, an element of of government code that requires that jurisdictions respond when there's a discretionary decision to be made, that they respond timely. It's it's sort of like a chess clock. Once you submit a complete application, you've been determined that you have a complete application. Jurisdiction has thirty days to respond with a request for additional information. Once that additional information is given, you have a certain period to to lapse where you can review the project. And essentially, what it leads up to, ultimately, the permit streamlining act leads up to a de facto approval if the jurisdiction doesn't follow the correct steps to put the applicant on notice that they don't have a complete application. So we're very rigorous in our application of the permit streamlining act because if someone were to abuse it, they would get a an approval by right approval for something that we've said we want to have discretion over.
Okay, so we don't know for sure. You'd have to research it more and so it doesn't sound like there was a notice of intent to submit an application and there was not a scoping consultation with Native American tribes. But you're
It's not relevant to this type of decision.
Okay. There was some discussion last night about ministerial process and you had said that, you know, basically implied it needed to be done by a staff member, and it could be any staff member. And I was looking at SB thirty-five, updated streamlined ministerial approval process. And it basically said that you know, ministerial design review or public oversight of the application, if any is conducted, may be conducted by the local government's planning commission or any equivalent border commission responsible for review and approval of development projects or the city council or the supervisors as appropriate.
True.
Okay, so it actually doesn't say anything about city staff. It's just referring to these other bodies.
Yeah, I believe that the section that you're referring to in SB thirty-five is specific to, I mean, it's, it's a general statement. It's true. You can have any official within the city. You can have any any staff member, any elected, any appointed.
Well, it doesn't say that. It's actually pretty specific. It's pretty specific.
The the section that you're referring to is specific to SB thirty-five projects. And what it's saying is that you you may have design review approval by either one of those two bodies. And what it's trying to do in that particular instance is to distinguish between the typical types of discretionary review authority that the planning commission, the city council typically have from this type of design review authority, which would be a ministerial review comparing objective standards. And so jurisdiction in implementing SB thirty-five could say we want the city council to be that body that's reviewing these. It could say we want it to be the planning commission, and they could also say we want it to be any other staff member.
Okay.
So for SB thirty-five, it's explicit about that for the general, in general, ministerial actions could be taken by, you know, any any member. And typically, the way that our our codes are structured within our municipal code is that whatever the subject matter is, if there's a department that has purview over that subject matter, then it's delegated to the department director for that department. And so that's why the code was written the way that I wrote it. And again, if the council wishes to make it any other official, any other planning body, as long as they're objective standards, they can be.
Okay, great. Thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
I did, Councilmember Watson, I just wanted to jump in for a second. I mean, it seems like we're talking about like the code in general and not specific to this particular project. So I'm just wondering if this is heading in that direction to be like specific to this project?
I mean, there is a ministerial approval process. You know, that was my understanding from the slide David had showed to us yesterday. So and that was, you know, basically part of the conversation we had and Commissioner Mayor, you know, had had also kind of expressed concern with was that that, you know, process was basically under the sole authority of the community development director. And the conversation was, you know, is that something we're comfortable with? Or, you know, in that, you know, do we, do we want to provide a more robust public process and allow for public input at maybe a planning commission meeting or a city council? So I do think it actually pertains, you know, a lot to this.
Well, it's, yeah, it's my understanding, though, that we, for this particular, like, if we were going to make changes, then we're making changes to move forward in the future, you know, not just specific to this particular project. So, I mean, if I guess that's a discussion to have, you know, but
No, I think this actually is specific to this particular project. So I could be mistaken. But, yeah, that's my understanding.
Mayor? Would it be all right if I made a motion? I'm ready to motion at this point.
I mean, I still have a lot more to talk about.
We need to take public comment also.
Okay, oh, thank you.
I actually have more comments. I have more questions in the comments.
Okay, to me, it just seems like
You're cutting me off. You're interrupting me.
Actually, I was talking, but okay.
There's also a lot of changes that I want to propose. I think the planning commission had a lot of really good input. We really haven't talked about that. And, you know, especially the letter that Commissioner Mayor sent to us, there's a lot of really good changes and points and suggestions that I think we really need to discuss.
And I'm, and I think we're very happy to entertain those specifics. If we could just get to those.
I'm ready. I mean, I just needed to get my background questions answered. Yeah.
Okay. So did you?
Yeah, I can start, definitely. So, you know, the first one is removing discretionary review and giving it to the development director exclusively, the review authority for management plans, a principally permitted permanent supportive housing projects. So I think that was the first one. And I think the idea is, you know, we, it's recommended that we provide an avenue for more public input. So I think that's the primary one. And, you know, I think that's really the question in front of the council is, you know, every time we do this, where we, we basically take the power of the people that's been given to us as an elected body, elected by the people, and we give it to one person on staff. And I don't, I don't really think that that's the desire of the community. I think, you know, with something like this, we need to make sure that we retain oversight and also that, you know, we continue to provide an outlet for public input. So I think changing that to, you know, review by a council or by the planning commission would be a lot more appropriate.
And do we have any thoughts on that particular suggestion?
Can I give just a little bit of clarity between discretionary and ministerial decisions?
Absolutely.
So with a ministerial decision, the intent is that the decision maker, whoever it may be, looks at an objective set of standards and there's no discretion involved. There's no subjectivity involved in making the decision. You know, the standard says it has to be three feet tall. Is it three feet tall or not? And so it's a really low level of discretion that is being, there's no level of discretion. It's a really low bar for decision making that's being afforded to staff at that point when you ask them to make ministerial decisions. Building permits are ministerial. There's no public process associated with it. You come in, you either meet the code or you don't. If you don't meet the code, you get a set of corrections and then you have to go back and change your plans until you meet the code. Those types of decisions don't have a public process associated with them. There's no access. People can't come in and say, hey, I think that, you know, the building code should be different than it really is. They just build according to the building code. Discretionary decisions, on the other hand, have a lot of public involvement. And the public are notified, there are legal requirements for who needs to be notified for which types of decisions that are discretionary and how to go about those notices. There's different noticing procedures depending on the discretionary decision that's being made. And those are almost always held by a hearing body. Now, the hearing bodies of the city of Arcata House that's allowed to make those kinds of decisions are the zoning administrator. That's the community development director. There are certain decisions that are discretionary decisions that are delegated to the to the zoning administrator, the planning commission and the city council. When this ordinance requires a ministerial decision, you know, we keep conflating these two things. When it requires a ministerial decision, that ministerial decision does not allow for public input. So people cannot come to a ministerial decision and say, hey, we really think you ought to, you know, change this code. Or we think you ought to change the way that this is interpreted. It's either it meets the standard or it doesn't. And all of the standards associated with this ordinance are embedded in the ordinance. And so the list of items that need to be in the operation plan, A through K, are also embedded elsewhere in that ordinance. And they tell you what the lighting needs to be, what the maximum number of beds are, the client waiting area is, and so on and so forth. And so the very few potential decisions that might be made on a ministerial basis through this ordinance are already baked into this ordinance. And the city council can certainly, you know, by all means, pick any, any, anyone in the city to make those those decisions. I'm not, you know, by any means, you know, tied to or advocating for that being my position. The only reason I put it forward as my position is because, again, this is material that's under the subject matter of my department. And typically throughout the municipal code, these kinds of really basic decisions are afforded to the directors of that department and they can delegate their authority. So the difference between a ministerial and a discretionary are really different and we can't conflate the two and make a ministerial process that has public input. And I I'm sorry, I'll stop. I see that Councilmember Schaefer has a question.
Go ahead, Councilmember Schaefer.
Well, okay, well, I mean, continuing just on that vein, I mean, I I think what the the issue here is and what I'm I'm not understanding, I guess, either. Or I I just, it hasn't like been put out there. Like, so what kind of things do we want public input on? Like, I I think that we're getting to the point where we're talking about Or I, I just, it hasn't like been put out there. Like, so what kind of things do we want public input on? Like, I, I think that we're getting to the point where we're talking about wanting public input on how these are ran. Uh, specific, you know, how, how buildings are being used, you know? We un- I think I understand that, yeah, like, if it's up to building code and it's meeting these standards, that, that can be approved by a designated city official, in this case, most likely you, uh, Director Loya. But, I mean, I, I, I think, and I guess, I don't know if this is where you're going, councilmember Watson, and maybe you could provide some examples of kind of what specific, I mean, things we would want this public input on and, and, and how that would really work, especially when we're working with private developers. I mean, once their, their plan is put forward, then are we requesting that that gets reviewed by council, um, even though we've already approved funding for these projects and we've already approved them? I'm just kind of confused out now, we're in this process, if we're changing it now, that public input would come on down the line, or how that mechanism for that would even work. And that's kind of where I'm getting a big question mark right now.
Sure, thanks for that. Um, yeah, you know, uh, I thought that the, we, originally, the conversation, you know, this all kind of came to us on, on short notice. Um, I understand, you know, the applicants got it to us as soon as they were able to. Um, and I just wasn't provided with very much time to consume all the information. Um, and you know, we also had the request from the planning commission to allow them more time. Um, you know, originally, I had suggested a special meeting, but the council decided, uh, you know, no one wanted to second my motion. Um, but then after the fact, uh, we decided to go ahead and have a special meeting to get more input from the planning commission. And last night, it seemed like there were a lot of concerns from the planning commission that, you know, I didn't feel like were um, accurately portrayed to us by the staff, you know? I, I mean, they kind of, you know, diminu- diminished, um, you know, what their concerns were. And, uh, it seemed like they were a lot more robust than that. So, you know, I think, um, we really need to keep in mind that Commissioner Mayor has more credentials and experience in planning than anybody on this Zoom call right now. And anybody on the planning commission. She's, you know, very well educated and skilled in doing this kind of stuff. Um, so I, you know, I don't think we should take her suggestions lightly or just kind of blow them off. And we should take them very seriously and put a lot of thought into them. She spent a lot of time not getting paid to, you know, put all this information together for us. Um, and, uh, you know, yeah, so that's, you know, kind of where I start with. And I think, you know, as it comes to specifics, um, there needs to be language that requires a robust continuing process for public and neighborhood input and resident communication on permanent supportive housing projects. So we don't really have that in, in anything that we've, we've done here. So I think as these projects are ongoing, you know, we need to have that avenue. So, yeah, as far as this, you know, particular suggestion, um, that's what I'm talking about. Do we want to allow our constituents to be able to participate in these kinds of housing projects?
Um, councilmember Watson, do you mind if I, if I jump in?
No.
With you? Okay, so, um, I, I did have that conversation with, uh, Director Loya today, and we were, and I was wondering maybe if you could explain, Director Loya, what you had told me regarding, um, because that was my question too. Because for me, the main thing that came out of that meeting last night was is there a way for more public input? Um, you know, I, 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 the main thing, and so I did. So maybe if Director Loya, if you could share what you shared with me, that would be helpful.
Thanks. And it's, it's interesting to know that, um, another council member was provided time with staff, but I was denied. So I appreciate that point.
And I might be able to clarify, David, but feel free to jump in. So, um, we did look, um, I did, uh, follow up quite a bit on the planning commission's discussion on that last night. And actually, late in the day, um, we were able to reach staff at, at the state HCD office as well. Um, so adding some level of public, uh, additional public review, um, HCD staff has indicated to us that in the ordinance provision, um, they would not approve that. Ultimately, you know, you see the base ordinance in front of you. You see the, that has been instituted in Arcata for many years and many affordable housing projects. And then you see the proposed changes to it to make sure that our current ordinance uh, comports to, to the current laws that would support these projects being successful. So HCD has indicated to us that adding that specific to the ordinance, uh, that they would not approve the ordinance moving forward these projects. However, um, these two projects before us are not completely ministerial projects, right? They do have discretionary components to them. Uh, they have the loan terms, uh, that the council approved at the last meeting. There will be a regulatory agreement uh, that will be developed if the grants are approved. Uh, and so in, in, I would say the loan term sheet would be the best place to add a provision around some ongoing community, um, engagement with the residents, um, and/or the neighborhood. Um, the ordinance is probably not the best option for that, but the loan term sheet, which in this project has been before you already. Um, but if it was the council's wish, we certainly could bring back the preliminary operating plan at a later meeting for you to consider and for you to review and take public input on.
I think that sounds great. Really appreciate that. Um, yeah, how does the council feel about that?
That, that sounds good to me. I just, yeah, because, because where I'm right, at, right, at right now in approving, you know, this specific, you know, piece that has to do with land use and the specific parcels, I don't see where, you know, these ideas fit into that necessarily. But like City Manager Deemer just said, you know, looking at those loan terms and actually how these projects are going to play out and making sure that funding is going to where it's going to and that, you know, both Dan Co and Arcata House are meeting certain standards. And, you know, review by us and/or the planning commission, um, you know, whatever is decided. I, I definitely see that as something that could be included in that more than this particular, you know, piece of legislation.
Yeah. Sorry. I really appreciate, um, um, City Manager's comments and, um, Director Loya's as well. That was a lot of clarification that I feel like I was missing out on, and I appreciate it.
I completely agree with councilmember Matthews. Yeah, I think this is an important discussion, um, but not necessarily, um, pertinent to what we are trying to move forward with this evening.
Yeah, it would have been really helpful, um, you know, if I could have asked my questions, uh, to staff, and I would have had that information. This saves us a lot of time. I'm just wondering, how's the council feel, um, that I wasn't able to access staff today?
Well, um, I don't think we're legally allowed to speak on that because there are reasons why you have a limited access, and I don't want to get in trouble for speaking out of turn. So I don't really feel that we can address that. Maybe Nancy can fill us in.
Uh, the only other item to say is that, um, you, from what I understand, your questions came in at the very last minute. Um,
They came in early.
There, let me finish. You, you've been talking about people talking over you, so now you wait for a minute. Um, there is a protocol for you to have access to staff and as there is for every council member, and you can access staff through that method. And I think you, you did not want to do it that way. And David's time is very limited. I know he had other meetings. And the mayor, as you well know and remember, actually needs to be interacting with staff in order to be able to facilitate the meetings. So I, I think that's enough. I don't think that we're on topic anymore. I think we've moved off the agenda item. And we can take this up in closed session further if you would like.
Yeah, we'd definitely like that. So I appreciate we get a closed session on a future agenda. Um, so the next item is, um, you know, I really feel like we should require indoor and outdoor gathering areas for residents and large permanent supportive housing projects. Um, and it sounds like that they're gonna include it for this one. But, um, I think we should, uh, require it for future projects. And that's all I got for, um.
I was gonna say, I think Director Loya had a response to that because we actually did talk about the indoor/outdoor areas today. Would you, would you enlighten the rest of the council, please? Hope you're still muted, David.
I'm Zoom. Um, for the, um, outdoor gathering areas and, um, the, uh, common areas indoors that are referenced in the, uh, the ordinance, those are really tied specifically to, uh, emergency shelter. And they did come out of, um, you know, SB two language that identified these as, uh, requirements for, for emergency shelters. Um, and SB two also required that the, um, you know, that permanent supportive housing have no other requirements that every other type of, you know, that type of housing, multifamily housing uh, had. So, so you can't add additional requirements, uh, for standards, and you can't add additional process that's not already embedded in uh, the requirements for other, uh, multifamily housing. Um, now, I will say that, you know, we, we can take up the structure of the ordinance at, at a future time um, and get into that in a, a lot more detail. But, um, you know, certainly, there's, there's, um, you know, there's a little more to cover than we can in, uh, you know, in a single city council meeting. Um, so for, for those permanent supportive housing, um, projects, you have to look to multifamily housing standards, uh, as a basis for, for what's required. And so if the council chose to require, you know, um, you know, these, these client-serving areas, uh, gathering areas on all projects, uh, then you could, you know, make that ordinance change in the future to multifamily standards. And then you could apply them also to permanent supportive housing. But you can't apply them to permanent supportive housing without applying them to all, uh, multifamily types.
Thank you very much.
I think, yeah. And again, you know, the, the reason why the state had client gathering areas and client waiting areas embedded in, in, um, emergency shelters is because there's not a whole lot of privacy in an emergency shelter, and you need to have areas to stage people while they're waiting for various activities. And that's not really germane to, you know, to, to long-term permanent housing types.
So, um, are there any other questions? We can still, o- obviously, after public comment, we can still come back and discuss more. But if there, if we don't have any more immediate questions for staff or each other, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Okay, it looks like, it looks like we can do that. So if you would like to speak on this, um, please raise your hand.
All right, we have, we do have some people raising their hand. Our first one will be Jean. And Judith L will be after that.
Thank you, Jean. So you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, since we are in a crisis, I'm wondering what is planned for the right now? Is there anything set up right now where vouchers are available for people to get indoors? Is there a way to purchase heavy-duty, um, rain ponchos till this can happen? Um, okay, those are two questions. Do I have more? Do I have to shoot them all out now? For my two minutes?
Yeah, because Jean, we don't, we won't necessarily come back and answer them all, but we'd love to hear, hear what your requests are.
Yeah, well, I thank you for that. Okay, and I do believe absolutely that the tribe's, um, consultation on this is significant. And that they have, um, that they also have experience with the discrimination and, um, of society. They've had recent experience with that. Um, and and their people, along with our people, are out there, but they might, they might understand the suffering more and, and also be able to detour us from making a ghetto, from making a, like how they were pushed off on the reservations areas, kind of out of town. I hear about this Gentoli Lane in West, um, what they call that area, for motels to be opened for the homeless. It's like, why are we pushing them all in this weird direction? If we're embracing them as a community, they need to be in reach. We need to see them without seeing a hundred of them to help, is my feelings on it. Um, quickly, um, the, the, oh, their voice is being heard, the homeless people's voice is being heard and being asked, what do you want? What I hear often from them is a piece of land. They, if, if part of it could be motel and part of it of land, so the ones that cannot have that close contact with other people, um.
Jean, that's your two minutes, Jean, but thank you so much for your thoughts. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll be seeing you again. I appreciate it.
Wonderful. Thank you. And who do we have next?
Next, we have, uh, Judith L, and after that will be, uh, Carol.
Okay, go ahead, Judith. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much for this opportunity. I would just like to say thank you to the city council for your considered support of the people in our, um, in our city who are houseless. I live on F Street, which is right up the street from City Hall at the cul-de-sac, and I am aware of people who are in, in need. And it just breaks my heart to see people in the rain and in the sleet and without any resources or any place to go. So thank you so much for your compassion and your understanding of this disaster that we are in. I strongly support the, um, combining, Housing for Homeless Combining Zone being, uh, applied to the properties in Valley West. I know that Arcata House Partnership does have an office which is right next door to the Days Inn, which is one of the properties that's being considered. And so I think it's very appropriate that that would be a place where, um, motel could be used for housing. And this project being the, so, having the support of the state and also of the city council, I just feel is very heartwarming. It makes me hopeful for the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Judith. Who do we have next?
Carol is next, and after that will be Sherri S.
Okay, go ahead, Carol. Thank you.
I, I just have a couple of questions. And one of them is, are SROs principally permitted in this zoning? I don't know. I would love to find out that. Because Dan Co talked about converting those if something happened. And then would, uh, you asked Dan Co, how many of the units are for chronically homeless and how many are for non-chronically homeless? That was part of the application in, in, in the, in his report. And then last night, I talked about the transient occupancy tax. Um, and for both motels combined, it was a hundred and seventy thousand a year, which is like nine, nine point five million over the fifty-five years. And then later on in the meeting, I thought somebody asked about those numbers, and then it just kind of, nobody responded. And so just wanted to reiterate those again. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Um, okay, so next we have Sherri, please.
Hi, good evening. And I would like to thank councilmember Watson for attempting to preserve the opportunity for public input about this project. And it's a complicated topic for those of us in the public. And so any additional understanding we can get, we appreciate. The concerns brought by the planning commission should be given proper consideration. And if additional special meetings are needed to meet the application deadline, the end of this month, I believe, so be it. And with that being said, we look forward to seeing our houseless neighbors safe under their own roof as soon as possible. And please know that we are in favor of this project. The more people we can house, the better our community will be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Next is Jim, and after that will be Kimberly. Go ahead, Jim.
Can you hear me? Um, all right. I do thank you for a moment to speak. And I had a couple of questions relating to the bill that I think will be affecting this. It's, uh, Senate Bill six-two-one, that is in the conversion of hotels and motels. And just double checking on one thing where it states, and I'm guessing in this case, the requirement succeeded, because this is going to all be houseless people are living there. But within that, it says ministerial approval process provides that development reserve ten percent of proposed housing units for lower income unless local government affordability requirements exceed these requirements. Um, and that's just one thing I want to get out there just to be sure, because I do just absolutely support this project and look forward to seeing uh, moving forward that this is made available for other people. Uh, another one is just to clarify, it sounds like- Another one is just to clarify, it sounds like the ministerial process, CEQA, does not apply to the approval of the project. And just to clarify that. And the other one was related to what Councilman Watson had mentioned earlier about the fifty five years for units that are rented to occupants. And I'm just wondering, will that apply to just that ten percent? Or does that apply to an ongoing population of low income for the entire time of the of the project? And that's all that I have to ask. And once again, thank you because I think this is a very valuable project. I just wanted to clarify these things.
Thank you, Jim. Um, go ahead, Kimberly.
Hi, thank you. Um, I guess I just want to reiterate that the decision tonight is going to affect Valley West for the next fifty five years. This does not have to be decided tonight, but as David stated last night at the joint study session, this can go on to the next city council meeting on one nineteen and will still allow plenty of time for the grant to be submitted. Concentrating this number of homeless housing on one city block is nothing less than segregation. To the earlier speaker Jean's point, tiny house villages in another part of Arcata would be one way to lessen the impact on Valley West. I implore you not to take this decision lightly. I've not seen any other projects pass so quickly and so rushed. And I just want to know what would it be like if it was happening in your backyard? And you all know, I am not a NIMBY. I have been working and advocating for the homeless for seventeen years. I have not missed a holiday delivering holiday meals. I have been involved in, well, I'm involved in five housing groups right now for the homeless as well as affordable housing. So, you know, I feel like a lot of people aren't speaking out because it's like, well, shame on you. And you're going to be called a NIMBY. And this isn't about NIMBYism. This is about equity and spreading the unhoused community throughout Arcata. My concern is that if this does happen, it's going to affect the unhoused community. I want them to be welcomed into the community and supported and feel wanted. But if they are feeling resented because it's impacted Valley West in such a way, that that is a concern. I know a lot of the community here can get behind one project, but they feel like we just simply don't have the capacity for more than one project. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Kimberly. So I think next is it Patricia?
Um, yes, I was, I just kind of want to talk on the, you know, just put my voice out there that the community really hasn't been involved lately with the process on a lot of different aspects of development. Sorrel Place is a huge one that got pushed through in two weeks. And I think if the community was involved more, it'd be, it just would make for a really stronger project. And I think it's a trend that's starting to happen. I know there's a lot of mistrust with the community because we just haven't been hearing about it. And I know it's during COVID and it's really difficult to get information out to the community. But I think there should be even an extra effort to get the community involvement. This is something that I am very much for. I would love to see it in the neighborhood that I live in. And I really wish that we would have been brought, you know, forward, it would have been brought to the community. You know, when the city was, the staff was first talking about it and that property was, you know, was sold and this was an idea because I think it could just be I think the support of the community is huge. And I think it's just a trend that a lot of us in the community are feeling that, you know, we are kind of left out of it and it, I I just think it should be focused on more. Like I said, like I really feel for my homeless neighbors in my community, in my neighborhood as well. And I think I, it's a project that I really like, and I think the NIMBY factor and label like really keeps us from speaking up, but because we are in favor of it. So anyways, I think we should, we should move forward with really trying to get the community involved more. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. All right, is there any more public comment?
Seeing for any more public comment on this item? Not seeing any more public comment, Mayor.
Okay, well, then I will take it back to the council for any final comments, questions, or for a motion.
Yeah, I just want to say that I know that can I ask Karen, City Manager, I know that we have set aside some more ARPA funds for like a community center in Valley West. Can can you tell us, speak a little bit about some other things that we might do? Because I know that the people of Valley West are concerned that, you know, the conference room at Redwood Inn is is something that they were hoping on using in the future. And I was wondering, I I know that we set aside some funds to invest in Valley West. Can we speak to that a little?
Sure, without getting too far off topic, we do have, so one, the council has looked at funding three year contract with KUNA to continue to do public engagement. Part of that is around development of actually a business district, like a mini Main Street, to start to bring a voice to the business community out there. And part of that is further engagement within the residential neighborhood. And within that is this continued development of community gathering spaces. So I don't want to go into specific sites yet because we need to contact property owners, you know, before we do that. In addition to that, the council obviously approved another grant tonight. Well, I think we are fourth grant in the last three years of really trying to get Carlson Park developed. We're very hopeful on one grant that we have pending, and then I'm submitting actually another request for funding for Carlson Park to yet another potential donor this week. So we are really, I would say that is Carlson Park and the development of that park for the neighborhood has been one of the council's top priorities. And certainly a lot of staff time this year. And so I'm feeling very hopeful within the next two years that we will be, you know, really starting to build and develop that space out. So there's a lot of good stuff happening in Valley West. And then a part of that, we also, the council supported a grant, a homeless encampment resolution grant. And we got that submitted on the thirtieth of December, which would actually work specifically with the encampments at Carlson Park and relocate those those specific encampments and individuals that have been living in a community in Carlson Park to a microhouse village as well. And so, yeah, there's a lot happening there and and to the credit of this council making it a priority.
Thank you. And then just really quickly, just to, you know, maybe answer a question that has been asked a couple of times that hasn't been addressed. Is there kind of a backup plan in the budget for the missed transient occupancy taxes that we're going to be losing?
Yeah, so that is a discussion that this council will continue to wrestle with budget year after budget year, right? You know, my staff recommendation will be that we should be looking in, you know, in our planning code updates to add certain areas that we could bring additional hotel housing into this region. Right now, our TOT continues to trend upward. So I anticipate that at the time that we lose these, we will probably be able to continue at that level. But that being said, you know, let's say that number would have grown and let's say that's $200,000. That's $200,000 that this council doesn't get to spend on other things each of those years, right? This council also has as a goal this year to be looking at potential funding sources for ongoing housing, right? So how that discussion evolves within this council and whether or not we look at going out with a voter initiative to support long term housing, you know, that could be a way to bring resources to projects like this, to projects like safe parking, or potentially to offset, you know, other revenues that are coming in. That's also on the list that we might discuss. So it is something that we'll wrestle with. These are very rare opportunities, you know. We've had a lot of discussions about five years, you know, being funded of operational cost. Senator McGuire fought hard for that in this bill and in this legislation. All of the other, you know, permanent supportive housing projects that we've had have come with very little or no, you know, supportive operational funds in the beginning. So you know, I feel confident on these projects, working with the two applicants that are before you tonight because they do have a proven track record in Arcata of managing similar projects. And without five years of funding, right? So with that five years built in, you know, the intent is, is that we build success that then allows them to continue to draw funds for continued operations.
Thank you. Those are answers. Thank you.
And I just, I wanted to add in that just we we don't just have these two hotel areas planned. We're very open for lots of things. We we have the safe parking that we'll be talking about later that we're we're working on and also working with Cooperation Humble on the Tiny Home Village. But I think what we've come across in our discussions is there isn't a one solution to fix everything. We need lots of solutions and lots of ways to go about this. And it's not just with low income housing or homeless. We need housing for all people in our area. And so whatever we can do, of course, we need to be thoughtful and we need to consider our entire community. And I really believe that everyone on council takes that seriously. We all live here. We will live here long beyond our terms, I'm quite sure. And, you know, we want to live in a successful thriving city. So and, you know, the speed of which this has come to fruition has been brought up a lot. And it wasn't something, please correct me if I'm wrong, that this wasn't something that we started as a city or a council. This is something that Dan Co and the Arcata House Partnership are doing and then coming to us to partner with them. So it wasn't like we were looking to do this behind closed doors. It came up. It's a really great opportunity, like the city manager pointed out, five years of wraparound services, which is unheard of. And so we are trying to move quickly to take advantage of that. And I think in the past, councils have been criticized for moving far too slowly. And, you know, if if we were dragging our feet on this and leaving people out on the streets, I think we would be hearing about that, too. So we're looking at how can we take advantage of these great opportunities that are popping up and and getting our people off the streets as soon as possible, which, as our, one of our colleagues, Jean, said, is not even soon enough because we have people that need housing tonight. And there's really, we don't have resources for that. So it is something that we are moving quickly on because it's a crisis and we have people on the streets.
You know, I think the tragedy is that, you know, even after supporting both these projects, there's still going to be people on the streets, right? The camps are going to still be there. There's still going to be car camping. And as we've acknowledged, you know, it houses very little people in the end that are actually in the Arcata area. And I, you know, I definitely feel like it's rushed. I really agree with the community on that. You know, I just still feel like I need more information. For example, the impacts on local businesses. You know, I think our TOT is up, which is great, but it really makes no sense to to cut something significantly that's really our only increasing revenue stream. For a project that actually doesn't meet our number one goal of housing Arcata's homeless, when it's likely only a small percentage of people living there will be from Arcata. And I think it's, you know, it's a hard sell. I don't want to be the one to tell the Arcata taxpayer that we're giving up $200,000 a year of your city money so we can house people that don't live in your city. So I don't know, there's just, I I could go with one of them. I could compromise and, you know, approve one of the projects. But at the end of the day, I just don't see the upside for our constituents in the Arcata taxpayer.
Well, and what would really be helpful to us as a city if, as if all of the municipalities in our county could work together to provide housing. And so the burden wasn't just on one, two, you know, municipalities, but we were all working together and then we could have, truly have an impact on all of our communities. Um, Councilmember Schaefer, did you have your hand up?
I did. I wanted to make a motion, a motion to approve item H from the consent calendar.
A second.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Schaefer and a second from Vice Mayor Goldstein. I'll do a roll call vote. So Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Goldstein.
Aye.
Councilmember Matthews.
Aye.
Councilmember Watson.
Aye.
And I will vote aye. So it does pass four to one with Councilmember Watson dissenting. Okay, so that moves us into new business. So next we have a presentation by the Core Hub regarding its works around decarbonization and resilience and how it may align with city goals and priorities. So I'd like to welcome Jana Ganion and Amy Jester. If you guys would like to introduce yourselves and begin your presentation when ready, we'd love to hear from you.
Thank you so much. I will introduce myself first and then I'll pass it over to Amy. I know some of you, many of you, I I'm meeting for the first time tonight, so it's great to meet you. My name is Jana Ganion. I'm the Sustainability and Government Affairs Director for the Blue Lake Rancharia Tribe. And in addition to that role, I'm also the launch coordinator for the Redwood Region Climate and Community Resilience Hub, which we're here to talk about tonight. In addition to those two roles, just to give people some idea of my work at the Nexus of Infrastructure, Climate and Resilience. I've served on and was elected co-chair in 2020 the U.S. Department of Energy's National Working Group for Energy and Infrastructure in Tribal Nations. I also serve on the California Public Utilities Commission and the California Energy Commission Disadvantaged Communities Advisory Group. And and I serve on the the U.S. Bureau of Ocean Energy Management, the California Intergovernmental Renewable Energy Task Force as well. And it's just, it's great to be here tonight and we're looking forward to presenting and hearing back from from all of you. So I will turn it over to Amy.
Others of the public and city staff that are on tonight. So one of the things that we just wanted to note is, well, you know, we have a little bit of time this evening to do an orientation to the Core Hub as well as processes that are going to be coming related to offshore wind developments. And, you know, we'll have a bit of opportunity for discussion around that and questions, but coming out of our our presentation here, we'd love to entertain any additional questions and do follow up with you as well around how we can support the work that you're doing as leaders through this critical time of climate change and catastrophe, but as well as this super rich time around our region and the globe for coming up with innovative climate resilience adaptation and mitigation solutions. So I just wanted to put that out there. And we also just really wanted to appreciate the city of Arcata's leadership in the region to address and respond to climate change. So thanks to the many ways that the city is leading in that area, including commitment to reduction of greenhouse gas emissions through the energy program and the greenhouse gas inquiries. And before that, engagement in and leadership around the county's regional climate action plan. Really appreciating the way that the city has shown up there and also incorporating sea level rise into planning processes among the other work that you do as well. So the Climate and Community Resilience Hub was launched in the fall of 2021, so I guess a couple of short months ago through a collaborative effort by the SHOC Energy Research Institute, the Redwood Coast Energy Authority, Rancharia, and the Humble Area Foundation and Humble Area and Wabber Community Council incubating the efforts, which really came out of those previously leaders from those previously mentioned organizations coming together to think about and dream about a different way of engaging community, supporting leaders, advancing projects that would support regional climate change, particularly coming out of the experience our communities have had with the Karagin Project. I should also note that I'm Amy Jester, the Director of Policy Advocacy and Civic Leadership of the Humble Area Foundation and Wabber Community Council. So the goal of the Redwood Region Climate and Community Resilience Hub, or the Core Hub, as we will refer to it going forward, is to become the first proven carbon sequestering rural area in the U.S. with improved decarbonized, renewable crossbelt and natural systems. with improved decarbonized, cross-built, and natural systems using trusted, replicable community engagement that offers equitable outcomes and benefits. And there are four ways that we propose to do that work. One is through community engagement, making sure that climate resilience projects, efforts, and collaboratives include robust community engagement, convenings, dialogue that support education and distribution so that we can move forward with greater levels of trust in processes that will make our communities more resilient. Yes, please.
I was just gonna hold. I don't know if it's just me, but I'm having a hard time hearing you. I just thought I'd check with others, make sure that we, it's a little bit faint.
Bear with me.
I think my connection is just kind of bad. That's why I turned off my video. This, I'm still here though. Try, yeah, it, it might be on, on her end too. I'm not sure.
You know what? It is on my end. For some reason, the speaker option is not the one that I usually use for Zoom, which is not available to me this next, unfortunately. So I will make my piece short and turn it over to Jana, who does have better sound. So, and I'll just speak more, a little bit more loudly for a couple more points. There are a couple of really critical approaches that the Core Hub is using in our work. And one is that of prioritizing equity, really centering equity and justice, ensuring benefits accrue to underrepresented, historically currently marginalized communities first to the greatest extent, and having that be central to how we do our work. And then also technical assistance. So facilitating access to experts' data and research that can support communities and decision makers in advancing projects in a way that will support innovative solutions that are able to move forward and do so in a way that will hopefully result in less gridlock than we experienced with some of the projects that have come before, before. So with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jana.
Thanks, Amy. Is everyone okay if I share my screen? Great. And you can see this okay? Terrific. So just following up on, and everyone can hear me okay? Great. Just following up on, on what Amy was saying. So the Core Hub is, it's being incubated at the Humboldt Area Foundation. One of the reasons that we're, we saw the need for this is, to add to what Amy said, is that, number one, Humboldt County is, it has a long history of climate smart, you know, climate smart innovation. And so building on that, on that history, that legacy of, of innovation here is, is a really important thing to keep in mind. Arcata is an example of the ways in which a community can get organized around climate resilience and, and make good progress. The other, the other piece of this, of course, is the fairly historic amounts of funding that are going to be coming down from the state of California in its $15 billion climate resilience investment and from the federal government in the bipartisan infrastructure law and other sources of funding that are in, you know, the programs and the grants are in design now. They're going to be hitting the streets in the next couple, the next couple of years. And so the recipe for this that we're seeing so far is like Mayor Atkins Salazar was just talking about. The, the federal government, the state government are looking for regions that are coordinated. And I, I hope you'll forgive the noise in the background. My cat is trying to tip over its water dish. Anyway, the, the recipe for that funding is regional collaboration. There's two basic phases. The first is to get organized with a, with a plan and a set of shovel-ready projects. And the second is to implement. Usually the first phase is a smaller amount and the second phase is a larger amount. And we're talking about potentially billions of dollars that could come to our region. So while every community, every nation is going to have its own definition of what climate and community resilience means to them, we can agree on some basic principles, I think, that we're striving for cleaner air, cleaner water, rewarding jobs in a thriving economy. We want to make sure that our social services and our, our youth and, and families are taken care of, that equity is centered, as Amy was saying, and that we're able to withstand these issues that we're experiencing now and recover swiftly. There's a couple of, you know, facts that we bring into any funding competition and that is that we have, we're rural, we're geographically isolated, we're behind the rug with curtain. We have 140,000 people. And, and with that, we have some very kind of incredible, like, like superlative attributes. In a good way, we have this history of innovation. We have these amazing natural resources. We have this thriving economy that is being turbocharged now with broadband connectivity. The Humboldt State University's transition to a polytechnic. The offshore, the offshore wind development potentially and other things. But we need to, I think, we decided that we need to be able to go out and get resources specifically for desiloing our climate resilience efforts. And so I'm going to go through a couple of contextual things very quickly because I know it's getting late and, and Mayor Atkins Salazar, I don't want to keep you too late. Anyway, I, I do hope that you're feeling okay. Obviously, the, the climate data in some ways speaks for itself. We're experiencing these things on the ground in terms of increasing temperatures and wildfires and power outages and warm blobs in the Pacific Ocean. These, this, the, the warming is creating this, this volatile situation that we're dealing with now more frequently that has a, a cost to it. And so this is a slide from 2020. 2021 is about equal to this or, or greater, but it was the highest amount of billion-dollar weather and climate disasters ever. This is a, a slide from NOAA. The impacts that we're seeing here, this is an image from September 11th of 2020, when the entire west, west coast was on fire. The, the issues around these climate amplified situations that we're dealing with are not going away. We have our own maybe negative superlatives that we have the fastest rate of sea level rise on the Pacific coast. That, of course, is impacting and threatening our local infrastructure. We saw that with the King tides just over the last month. And so we have some work to do in terms of working together to reorganize all these systems. We know this pretty well, but I think what's new is that we get to kind of refresh our thinking about all of the risk profile we have, both seismic and tsunami and climate-related. We have an understanding, a greater understanding regionally about how our infrastructure is organized. The fact that we're served by a single 10-inch natural gas pipeline. That pipeline is what powers the electrical power plant south of Eureka. And if that power plant goes out because the pipeline ruptures or we have a tsunami or for other reasons, the, our region is in the dark because we cannot import because of transmission line, electrical wire constrictions. We can't import enough electricity from outside resources to power our baseline needs here. So for all kinds of reasons, not the least of which that sea level rise will be inundating these areas. We have to get busy and that's going to take resources. And it's probably going to take a lot more regional effort than we're, than we're currently undertaking now. So the, many of you may know that coming out of the public safety power shut-off events that were super incredibly painful in 2019, the PG&E reorganized the electrical infrastructure. The areas in green on this map are now the Humboldt Island. So when there's wildfire risk and PG&E implements a PSPS outage in adjacent transmission areas, Humboldt County, at least in these green areas, are kept powered because of that natural gas power plant in Eureka. So this is fantastic. It was a great solution. It buffered us from a bunch of PSPS events in both 2020 and 2021. But again, we still have constraints on this system and a lot of single points of failure that we need to address. Plus, it's powered off of natural gas. That, that's not great for reliability and it's not great for the climate. So we need to look and work with our partners to figure out what the solution to all of this is. In addition, I, some of you may be familiar with this. This always gets my attention. But this is the work from Alderon Laird and others who allowed us to use this slide. The, this is the 100-year profile of sea level rise in the Humboldt Bay area. The blue is where Humboldt Bay is now and the yellow outline is where Humboldt Bay will be in 100 years. Of course, there's going to be hardening and there's going to be different ways to deal with this. It's not going to happen without human intervention, but get, this gives you a sense of what we are dealing with. Of course, we also have the, the nuclear waste facility that's right across from the mouth of Humboldt Bay. That is from the research that we've been doing with Humboldt State University, the California Energy Commission and federal partners. It's very, it's unclear whether or not we're going to be able to move that nuclear waste out of our region at any time. So having a specific plan for armoring that area is probably pretty important. And it's something that we just need to keep kind of in the mix as we go forward. As Amy was saying, one of the reasons why we think that, that it's important to set kind of a bold goal is that we've seen the success of doing that in other areas. So Humboldt County is now known internationally for low carbon and maybe lowest carbon electrical microgrid innovation. So the project that's going on right now at the airport, the projects that I've been involved with of the Blue Lake Rancheria Tribe, these came about because we set a bold goal. And in five years, we were able to construct five different microgrids that power different, different kinds of, of critical infrastructure throughout the region. And those microgrids performed. They provided significant resources in emergency events, including the 2019 public safety power shut-off. So we think that the Redwood Region is well-positioned to be a leader in climate community resilience, that that work is, is going on in many different sectors. It's powerful, but it's also siloed, that governments, including tribal governments, city governments, county, communities need more resources to do this work. And that if we can do our job well, we can decarbonize and improve resilience at the same time by doing a few things on this list. This is our website right here. As Amy was saying, you know, our job is to go out and try to find additional resources for the kinds of community engagement and technical assistance that fills gaps in what people are already doing. This is not meant to be duplicative or replace anything that is mandated in terms of climate resilience planning. And in fact, it is meant to support those efforts, make sure that, that, that we are working toward a set of projects and principles that we can go out and get resources to fund. So there's a lot of, of detail to this, to these things that we won't go into tonight. This is the, how do we get to being the first proven carbon sequestering rural region by 2030? Why is that important? Because all the work that we're doing now to do greenhouse gas emission inventories, scope one, scope two, all of these terms that we hear, we need to go further and we need to go faster to, to basically avoid even more emergencies than we're dealing with now. And what we found as a, as a gap that's been articulated to us is that people need more technical assistance around how do you make decisions that, that, that achieve those two goals at once, that decarbonize and improve resilience at the same time. Scope three emissions, which is tracking the emissions from everything that we do essentially, is really difficult work. But we have some of the assets here and some of the, the situational awareness that get us, that put us in position to be able to do that research and do that work. And in this way, we can become a model for other rural counties, for the country, and even for the globe in the way that we go about this. And we can do it fast and we can start replicating the recipe elsewhere because of the institutional knowledge we have right here in our region. One of the, the Core Hub's specific projects is to support community benefit strategies for offshore wind development. As we explore this new industry, and it could be, it could be a medium-sized industry. It could be a very large industry for our region. We want to make sure that, that as much as possible, we understand it. We understand how we can interact with our state and federal partners in some of these permitting and regulatory processes. We have a tight timeline. This purple bar is basically where we are right now, is the, in the NEPA, the Initial Environmental Reviews, to get to an offshore wind auction, which is going to happen about a year from now, maybe a little less. It's slated for fall of 2022. This timeline will be updated. This is sort of in years, how, how long the permitting process would take before we finally get turbines in the water, if that's what the community decides they want to do. So we have some time to figure it out, but we do need to get organized around basic principles and what we want to see out of this, out of these opportunities. And we need to be communicating that and inserting that into the processes and the permit phases that, where it makes sense. A cup, so these are example terms. It's going to be different for every community. The Core Hub will be doing work over the next six months to really work closely with, with our, with our constituencies in the reason, region to socialize what community benefits means within an offshore wind leasing environment and how we can, how we can insert our wish list into some of these processes and get some meaningful benefits on the ground. I'm almost done. Couple more slides. A couple of ways we can institutionalize community benefits is through these types of structures. So the auction to decide which developer or developers will have access to the Humboldt Wind Energy Call area, which is just offshore, about 20 miles out. They, they will need to, we're hearing, it's very likely that they're going to have a multi-factor auction, which, what that means is that we can shave off about 25% of the scoring criteria and attach community benefits to that. And the developers need to prove that they have a plan to do those community benefits as a part of their scoring criteria to win the auction, to be the as a part of their scoring criteria to win the auction, to be the developer for this region. Then there's a second bite at the apple in, once the auction is won, the developer has lease stipulations with the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management or BOM as we call them. And so we have an opportunity to, to insert community benefits there. And then there's also developer to community agreements, so CBAs. These are specific agreements that we've seen happen. They're most common with offshore wind in the fishing communities, but, but they happen in other contexts as well. And so, so these are the processes for offshore wind that are moving. We are, we are monitoring them. We are doing our best to keep up with all of that. And we will have a series of publicly available briefings that'll probably start, we estimate, mid-February or March, that will allow for the community to sort of have a, a once a month or twice a month opportunity to learn about what's going on with offshore wind, raise questions, concerns, comments. Tell us what the communities need in terms of technical assistance and support. And so we can figure out how best to, to move forward with this, with this opportunity, understanding that it has concerns for people as well. So that is just a snapshot of what the Core Hub is organized to do. Again, we're based at the Humboldt Area Foundation. There's more resources on our website. And just, just a few other resources here if people are interested in, in kind of just basics. I will point out that the SHOTS, the SHOTS Energy Research Center, the shotscenter.org/wind has an amazing amount of down scaled regional information on offshore wind, about information about the port, information about the economics, information about the environment, about species, about the technologies. So I, I can't recommend it highly enough. If you're, if you're interested to go read about it, go explore it, that would be my first, first stop. So I'll stop there. Thank you so much. I know I've taken up a lot of your time, but there's a lot to be done in fairly short order and we have a lot of money coming our way potentially to do it. And so, and so it's exciting. And it's great to be sort of refreshed, maybe after the holidays, to be able to continue this work in 2022.
Thank you so much, Jana and Amy. We do have a lot of work to do and it can be a bit scary and overwhelming, I think. And I appreciate your, your positive energy. I think this is, I think the third time that I've heard the presentation and I am equally uplifted every time because it gives me hope. I think you, you just have such this great energy that seems like we're just going to make it happen. So I look forward to being able to work together as a community to make it happen. And I know Joanne wasn't able to give public comment tonight, so I just, I hope she's watching because she is one of our most dedicated, our cadence that calls in for, on behalf of the planet to every meeting. And so I hope that she's watching this portion, so. Yeah. So if you have any comments or questions, go ahead and just raise your hands and, or, or just turn on your mic and, yeah, go ahead, Sarah. I mean, councilwoman.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to echo what Mayor Ikenzalzar said. I think this is probably my second time seeing this presentation with RCA and then maybe the third time seeing you speak with the Offshore Wind Task Force and everything. But thank you, Jana, just for being such a wealth of knowledge and, I mean, bringing this, you know, forward in our community. And we're really, as we talked about housing earlier, now we're talking about climate. I mean, we can see where we need to all come together as a county and bring in all of our different partners to be able to make these things happen and take advantage of, you know, federal money that's going to be coming in for projects like this. And, you know, resiliency is going to be so important up here. I mean, especially as, you know, Humboldt is kind of seen lightly as a climate refuge and we're going to have an influx of population, but also we're going to really be battling, you know, climate change on the, on the front here as well. And so just to, you know, know that we have these partners coming together to do this and getting all the cities and municipalities on board to work together is going to be so important. So just again, yeah, I, I'm feeling the positivity and excitement as well. And so thank you, Jana, and thank you, Amy, for being here and just, you know, giving us the update. So, thank you.
I am going to echo that as well. A great presentation. I think it's the second time I've seen it too. I am, again, super proud to work for Redwood Coast Energy Authority. And I'm so excited for offshore wind and thank you for all you do for Humboldt County. It's a really exciting time for us.
I completely echo everything that's been said. Thank you so much for this presentation and everything you're working on. I, I agree. I think this is uplifting and exciting for our community's future and our, our community's health as well. You know, we look at everything holistically. So just thank you so much for the presentation. I, I really appreciate it and really enjoyed everything that you shared. So thank you.
Well, thank you all. I just want to say a couple of things. One is that, you know, again, I know I said this before, but I think that this work comes out of, and the reason for the optimism is that we've done, you know, we've, we've pulled together as a region and done marvelous things in the past, in the present, and we will in the near future. And so that's why it feels so doable is because we have, we have the building blocks and the expertise that sets us up very well to fill in the gaps with things we don't know yet or don't have now. Redwood Coast Energy Authority and the City of Arcata are two examples of that. I mean, Redwood Coast Energy Authority went from making energy efficiency a household name to becoming an economic driver for the county in the community choice aggregation. It's, the, the, the success stories here are really unparalleled. And they all have, they all can be defined as climate smart, which even if they weren't sort of conceptualized that way, but it comes, i- in my, in my view, it comes out of this deep ethos and care for the region and the community. And we just, we couldn't be happier to, to help in this work and work with all of you. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any final thoughts from council before we move on to public comment? Okay. Are there any members of the public that were wishing to make comment on this item?
We have one hand raised. Jean, you've had your hand up for a bit. Are you wanting to talk about this particular item?
I apologize. I didn't realize my hand was up.
No worries. Thank you so much. Is there any other public comment for this item?
It's my hand down.
It is now. Okay. I don't think we have any other public comment.
Okay. Well, thank you again, Jana and Amy. We appreciate you taking the time to be here. So, thank you. Absolutely. So moving on to item B, which is to authorize the city manager to execute a month-to-month industrial lease for the purposes of providing a safe parking program on the property located at 1680 Samoa Boulevard. So could we have a staff report on that, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. This item has actually been a standing council item as a staff report update. It is the, it is a step in the process of creating a safe parking program. The safe parking program was a project that the council chose to put ARPA funds towards to provide individuals and families with, that have vehicles, currently living in vehicle, a safe place to park overnight while working towards a transition to more permanent housing. So we have looked at a number of different properties that the city owned. And then we've looked at a few private properties as well. And at this point, would like to recommend to the council that we enter into a lease for the property that's located on Samoa Boulevard. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen just to pull up sort of the city's base map to be able to show this property to you. So this is 255 Samoa Boulevard as it comes into town. There is a property on, you know, sort of this western side of the city that is currently vacant. This property actually was originally constructed as a waste transfer site for the city or for the, actually Humboldt Waste Management Authority as the JPA and has been used by soil businesses and soil amendment businesses for a period of time. And it is currently vacant. The lease terms that are before you tonight would be to enter into a lease. This is a joint ownership property by Richard and Karen Winkle and Brad and Tandy Floyd. And it's approximately, the building itself is just almost 13,000 square feet. And we would also be leasing approximately an acre of exterior space, including ingress and egress to the site. The lease would allow up to, I mean, we anticipate the program has been designed around 30 vehicles. Right now, we're in lease terms up to 40 vehicles if we can fit them. We have toured the site. It is the intent, right now, we have requests for proposals out for operation of the safe car camping area. But the intent is really to, to park the vehicles inside the structure. So while the site is completely fenced, which is one of the attractions of this site for the project, in fact, the building would provide additional security and, and additional safety from the weather for individuals that would be staying on site. So the tendency would be month to month and a base rent of up to $6,500 a month. And safe parking for up to 40 vehicles as well as associated site services. You know, we will try to work to get showers out. We will try to work to get mobile medical out to the site as we get things established. So I did want to identify, this is an ARPA-funded project. So unlike other affordable housing projects that we have talked about tonight, we do have a lot additional sort of discretion about who is, in essence, completed outreach to, to come into the site and can focus and concentrate on, on those vehicles that we know have been living in the Arcata area for a lengthy period of time. We have talked to the property owner, as many of you know, there are a few people that have been living right out here outside of the property. So in, one, it's not really a term of the lease, but we have agreed to certainly invite those individuals as well to come and be part of the safe parking program. So the action before you tonight would just be to authorize myself, the city manager, to execute that lease once it is finalized and approved by the city attorney. And I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, great. So let's go ahead and see if we have questions regarding this. How about Meredith? Would you like to start? Do you have any questions?
Sure. I just, I'm, this is just, you know, after talking about it and, you know, dedicating ARPA funds for it and getting staff updates on every council meeting, it's really exciting to finally have a location and be able to move forward with this. I know that a lot of folks are concerned about the cars that are now parked. Health Sport is that place, is that going to be a place that we're going to look to, to invite to move into that area?
Uh, yeah, the council had given staff that direction, so that's definitely on the top of the list. Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, um, I, I, I don't know, this question might be answered for myself, but it might be just be good to have this information and talk about it a little bit. But, because I know some people might be concerned that, yeah, why are we going into a lease when we could do this on a city-owned property? Why are we paying money for rent when we could have free rent on a city property? So just, could you just give us a little taste, Karen, of just like what the pros are of, of this property and why it's kind of worth paying that, that monthly fee as opposed to kind of starting from scratch on a city-owned property?
Absolutely. And, and that's a great question. We looked at predominantly city-owned properties that we have on West End Road, kind of be kind areas on West End Road, Little Lakes on South I Street. None of those properties had adequate fencing or utilities in the areas that we would be, you know, trying to construct infrastructure to support the safe parking area. And none of them were securely fenced. So that became sort of the attraction of this site. Our preferred site prior to this was really trying to look at Little Lakes. As the council line, hopefully the community knows, we've been actively working on finalizing a cleanup plan on, on a minor amount of hazardous materials that are still on that site. But even though we know we have very good maps about where that is, we really don't have, we're unable to get, I'll say, you know, approval to even move forward with something on another part of that property, even though we know it's an area that doesn't have contamination. So that one was eliminated in talking to our partners that are offering programs from, you know, mobile medical or showers, food, having a site that is located within walking distance of current support services at Arcata House Partnerships, such as food, you know, provisions for lunch and meal or, and kind of bulk food delivery seem to be important to those that are working with individuals that are living in their vehicles right now. So we were trying to concentrate. So then we looked at, we have other city parking lots. We have the community center. We have, we had parking, you know, we did a emergency sheltering right by the transit center. But at this point, we were really looking for a site that would sort of separate the uses, separate the recreational uses of the community park, separate the transit uses, you know, in that city-owned parking lot. So, and again, if we were moving into any of those city-owned spaces, we would be having to do a lot more fencing and utility development on those sites. So that's what became attractive about this site was really location, the ability to walk to some of the downtown services and medical services and at the same time, you know, have some infrastructure ready. We recognize that this is a pilot project. We have, have funding for a year. We did not anticipate when we created the budget for this project, we did not fully anticipate a lease for this project. But right now, we do have the operation services that'll be out with a request for proposal. So at this point, I am still hoping that the project will come in at the $685,000 for a year that the council has approved when we finalize the operational RFP, which will be coming back to you hopefully at your next meeting. If we have to have any additional discussion about budget, we can certainly have it at that time.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Watson, do you have any questions or comments regarding this?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Goldstein?
I hope you're okay, Stacy. I'll just talk for a minute so you can take a drink of water. No, I don't really have much to add. I just wanted to say, I mean, thank you to staff for all of the hard work on this. I'm really excited about this project. I feel like before it was even a project, it was a concept that was talked about for a long time in Arcata. So to see that, you know, come out and have something concrete to show for it is really, really exciting. And, and I'm glad that councilmember Matthews, you brought up the Health Sport parking lot, which it, yeah, I think we did, or as city manager, you mentioned, we did give direction on previously. So I think it will be really great for, for those living in their cars and also those that have had concerns about others living in their cars. Hopefully it will create some sense of relief for everybody in Arcata and will give a safe place for folks who are sleeping in their cars. You know, they'll know, I'm not going to be kicked out of this spot. I am allowed to be here. I can lock my car door and go to sleep tonight without any fear of, you know, disturbance or harassment or anything like that, which everybody deserves. And so I'm, I'm really thrilled to see this, this project, you know, have such a, a concrete thing before us. So I think you've stopped coughing, so I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that it's a month-to-month situation because although I think we all hope and expect for it to be very successful, I think that that might help our community feel a little bit more assured to just know that we, we have the option, if it's not working, to not do it. I don't anticipate that being the problem, but we have that option. And when, I guess I was wondering, just, I know people will have concerns. They're going to want to know, you know, the details and how it's going to be run. So do you have any idea of like when we would be able to come back and present some of those details so that we could have public engagement on that?
Uh, yeah, we do expect to bring an award a bid, in essence, for an operator for this project at your next meeting. The RFP closes on the 13th. But people can feel free to jump on or just reach out to me, the city manager here in Arcata, if you want to get a copy of that request for proposals to see what we're putting in. But the intent is for, you know, 24-hour staffing and, you know, support for the individuals that are staying there.
Okay, are there any other questions before we open it up for a public comment? All right, we'll go ahead and do that. And then if we have anything else that's brought up, we can discuss it afterwards. So do we have anyone that is wishing to speak on this particular agenda item?
Yes, we do have public comments. Um, we have one speaker at this time. Uh, two. So first will be Kimberly. And then after that, we have Judith. Go ahead, Kimberly, you have two minutes. I'm sorry, Kimberly, try again.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I want to thank city council for this. This has um been a long time coming and greatly needed. And um, I'm so happy to see this finally come into fruition. My question is, at any given day in Valley West, we have eighteen to twenty uh RVs alone. And so the truckers who are parking at, because they're staying at the motels, have nowhere to safely park their rigs right now. And with two schools in the near vicinity, we, it, it isn't feeling very safe. We have some blind curves now because these big rigs are having to park closer to Laurel Tree or on the corner because these RVs are kind of intermittently in between, not allowing space. Um, and of course, they too, I'm sure, would love to be included in this wonderful um wraparound services that are going to be accommodating. Are we including those in the number? And can you remind me again, how many vehicles or RVs will this particular property accommodate?
Uh, the request for proposals is anticipating thirty vehicles. And um, well, we've talked about, we'll see how the proposals come in. But what we anticipate doing is probably bringing ten in the first week and then an additional ten and then an additional ten to kind of build the program. Um, and and yeah, so we're um certainly starting to take note of the vehicles that have been in Arcata a while. Uh, and hope to be able to extend, you know, invitations to as many who have been staying in the Valley East, Valley West area as well as the Health Sport area. There are two or three other neighborhoods that we've got lists as well.
Could you tell me how this will be prioritized?
Um, we won't be able to finalize that until we receive the proposals from operators.
So a particular neighborhoods will all have an equal opportunity is what I'm hearing, correct?
Do you want me to keep having a back and forth?
Oh, actually, I, I was asking, but you answered the first one, so I was like, I'm running with it. So thank you. Yeah, no, um, whatever the protocol is, I will sign off with that last question. I think that that was um graciously answered, so thank you.
Okay, so next, I think we have Judith.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this opportunity. I just have, I just have a couple of questions. And the first one is, did I hear correctly that the, that the vehicles will be inside the building? Was that, was that something I heard correctly?
That, that was correct, true.
Okay.
Yeah.
And um, the other thing is that there are currently people in the area who are homeless and who are living in that area. Are they living in their vehicles?
I don't have a, I don't have an answer for that question.
Well, well, my question was, will other people be allowed on the property who are not living in vehicles? Will, will there be any expansion for people who are um tent camping or whatever?
Um, my understanding is not at this time. That is another thing that we definitely need. Um, as we talked about before, we really need to cover like all the bases, but um at this time, it's for the moving of vehicles into that area.
And the area surrounding it is all paved? Is, is that what I saw in the picture?
To my knowledge, it is.
Paved in some gravel.
Oh, okay, so it's not just dirt?
No.
Yeah. Okay, um, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, checking for um, Judith just, oh, Jean, sorry, I'm losing, I've got hands coming up and down. I guess now we don't have any. Um, all right, I believe just, oh, no. Not enough jeans, trying to think, Jean.
Gosh, that got my heart racing. I, I apologize, I'm not good techno- technology and I kept pushing it. But I still appreciate um one last opportunity. Um, this was a very full meeting tonight. Um, um, and the people who presented um last, those two young ladies, I really appreciated what I was able to um participate on tonight. Um, thank you. And I want to ask about the parking lot. I'm sorry, I get real embarrassed. I hope you can't see me. But um, on the parking lot, okay. If Health Sport was to have some opening, because this is going to fill up quick. I, the park, the people are parking in some areas thick. Um, and that's a great place. It's a, it's a movement. I mean, I really think if on city property to save that six thousand and have people in a motel room, like with that money would have been just beautiful, but month to month basis. If Clam Beach would meet the needs of many who, who have difficulty being indoors or inside. And Chief Brian and I talked on this last year because of the virus. We were very um interactive with each other concerned. And they were doing so well over there by Health Sport. It is flat, it's easy to walk, it's easy to wheel a chair, it's easy to get to town. Um, they never had use of the showers or bathrooms or anything, but the outhouses, they did have those. And when I sorry, um so and the different degree of illnesses of people um that we see. Two, it may be that Clam Beach, Health Sport and this spot can be useful for now for these people in tents and cars, not one is more important than the other. And in a car, you have some protection. These women are out there without cars.
Hey, Jean, I'm so sorry to interrupt you because we definitely appreciate your comments, but that is your two minutes, but um
I appreciate you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I appreciate.
It's, it's okay.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. Uh, I think we have another speaker, Patricia?
Um, yeah, I just had a couple, just really quick questions. Um, I was hoping that maybe they'll, but I know there's probably going to be restrooms provided, but are there going to be showers? Um, I heard something about mobile showers, um hopefully. Um, that's the case. And um, another thing too is um, yeah, somebody else touched on tent camping being allowed as well. And maybe a suggestion is letting the tent campers sleep indoors and then having the parking outdoors or a combination of the two. But um, but mainly, my main question was if there are going to be shower services for for these people in the campground. Um, thanks, and that's it.
Sure, absolutely. And what I can say is although we don't have the, you know, a plan in place um from whoever's planning to management, manage it, that is our, definitely our ideal, that there will be services. So not only the mobile showers and then restrooms on site, but also medical services and other mental health services that will be able to come to this particular location. So and when we're hoping um that that will entice people to want to be there because as I'm sure many of you are learning, we, we can't force people to be places. So there, you know, we can offer and hopefully have this great place that people want to come. Um, it will most likely be full, but there will also be people that won't choose to go there and that will be their choice. But hopefully, you know, getting thirty to forty people, vehicles off the street, it won't solve the entire problem, but hopefully it will make a positive impact in the neighborhoods that are feeling really inundated right now. Do we have any other public comment?
Checking one last time for any public comment for this particular item. Seeing none.
Okay, so um I'll toss it back to council for either more questions, comments, or a motion.
I would like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute, execute a month to month industrial lease for the purposes of providing a safe parking program on the property located at sixteen eighty Samo Boulevard.
One second.
Okay, so we have a motion by um council member Matthews. And was that a second by vice mayor? Goldstein, okay, thank you. Um, so we'll go ahead and and do a vote. So um council member Matthews? Did, you were muted, but I read your lips as I, okay. Okay, Vice Mayor Goldstein?
Aye.
And council member Watson?
Aye.
And council member Schaefer?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. Okay, so next in new business, we have item C, which is ordinance number one five 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 for introduction, amending the Arcade and Municipal Code Title II, Chapter Ten to make biennial consumer price index adjustments to campaign contribution limitations. So could we please have a staff report?
Sure, thank you. Um, this comes to the council every two years um and the year in which there is a uh city council election. Um, the city council has a uh campaign contribution limitation that was established by initiative measure in the nineteen nineties. And it is an ordinance. And part of the initiative measure uh did allow the limitation to adjust every two years um at the campaign year um by the uh Consumer Price Index. So it was initially set in the nineteen nineties at a hundred dollars and it is currently at two hundred and uh ten dollars. Um, working with the finance director, the next um increase would be another ten dollars to two hundred and twenty dollars. And I'll stop there. Uh, there's quite a bit more in the staff report about um uh the, the law of campaign uh contribution limitation, but uh you can ask questions if you want, otherwise. That's it for me.
Okay, I'll just, we'll just let this flow. If you have questions for um for Nancy, let's go ahead and unmute. I think it's pretty state forward, straightforward, we're just following California state law, so I um not really much to discuss, I don't think, but um so if there aren't any comments from the council, let's go ahead and see if there's any members of the public that would like to weigh in on this.
Thinking for a public comment on this item? Seeing none.
Okay, so we can either um have more or have a discussion or um someone can motion for a vote.
Um, I will make a motion to approve ordinance number fifteen fifty-five for introduction, amending the Arcade and Municipal Code Title II, Chapter Ten to make biennial consumer price index adjustments to campaign contribution limitations.
Waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only as part of your motion.
Waive reading of the text and consent to read by title only, yes. I, I read the bolded part, not the recommendation. I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion by council member Schaefer and a second by council member Matthews, so we'll take a roll call vote. Um, council member Schaefer?
Aye.
And council member Matthews?
Aye.
Council member Goldstein?
Aye.
And council member Watson?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. All right, so next we have our, this is our final chance for oral communications. Um, this is for a time for people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. So if you are on the Zoom webinar, go ahead and raise your hand. And this time you've got three minutes um for your discussion.
Okay, checking for any public comment on items not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one. Jean, go ahead, please.
Gotcha. Thank you. It's Jean again. Um, and I wanted to make a comment to uh Mr. Watson. And in regard to something you said um about the money going to homeless people who don't live here in Arcata, all this money. Where are your feet now? Where do you live in Arcata, where your feet are now? That's where I live, where my feet are now. And that's where we're all living our lives, is where our feet are. And so all these people are living in Arcata. And it is staying in, in the context of all humanity, whether people come or go, whether you move or not. Um, and people move through here and they have been for years and we've tried to give kind hands to those people. Um, and thank you for, let me say that. Um, I would just like to ask the city council if there are immediate funds available for helping the people right now that um that, that I can get things to them, but I can't afford to purchase um good things like the rain ponchos that you see in the hunting stores. Um, they cut, they're big, they cover the front, they would cover a backpack. Um, and I don't know if if you can help me there, but I really do want to help the people and and I'm not afraid of them. And some of them will, I trust enough to give her three ponchos and she'll give them out that night. Um, till we get rooms available. Thank you.
Um, thank you, Jean. Um, I think that
I can just respond quickly?
Absolutely, Brett. Council member Watson?
I really appreciate your comments, Jean. Thanks for taking the time. I know it's uh hard to make public comments sometimes. Um, and just to clarify, I didn't, I didn't say anything about money going to the homeless. Um, I think you might have misunderstood that. But I, you know, I understand what you're saying and I really appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Um, all right, so we're gonna go ahead, oh, oh, I see. Go ahead, Kimberly.
Okay, I'm gonna identify myself as an arcade planning commissioner. And I just wanted to point out, and I'm sure everyone is aware, that the Fortuna City Council made it illegal to camp in their city limits. And when asked what they were going to do um with those folks that are camping, they said they're going to send them to Arcata and Eureka. So I think the point that council member Watson was making was that it's going to be on Arcata's dime. And I think that, you know, as pointed out by other council members, ideally, as a region, we would be collaborative and we would all pay our fair share. So I think um my, myself personally, that, that's what concerns me also is that these are going to be coming from all out of the area. Likely ten percent, if we're lucky, are going to actually house Arcata residents. And I'm not sure how many will actually house Valley West residents. And the same thing goes for the safe camping. I'm hoping um if they, if they have to follow the continuum care, being that there is, I don't know if there's any grant money involved, but if it's ARPA funds, then I think the same guidelines are having to be followed, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Um, yeah, so for the, the safe camping, we actually do have a discretion, so we can move, we can focus on the people that are in um in our city limits. And just to follow up with Jean's question, um we, we do, we all, I think, echo your concerns um at night when it's rainy and it's stormy. I know a hotel opening in eight months or a year does not do those people any good in this moment. And we do definitely agree with you on that. And we do work with as many agencies as we can to help funding for temporary things. So we, we do our best in that. Um, but we're, so yeah, we hear you on that.
I just wanted to give a suggestion to Jean. I thought it was so wonderful that you want to help out um houseless folks in our community and um you were
houseless folks in our community. And you were asking about connecting to get the supplies that you're willing to hand them out. And that I just would suggest you connect with Arcata House Partnership. They do a lot of really wonderful work like that. And I'm sure they would love to have another volunteer, especially someone as passionate and dedicated as you. So I just wanted to throw that suggestion out there.
Hey, do we have any other final public comment? Okay, yes, Jim.
Hey. Question. Thank you to Commissioner Watson for bringing up the additional point that the planning commission was pointing out last night. I thought it was important to continue that conversation. In addition, since we are on things outside of the agenda, I just wanted to bring up something related to Gateway Project. Just reminding about the status of the improvement on our sewage treatment plant. And right now, I'm pretty sure it's just in the process of being upgraded to accommodate our present needs. And just hoping to look, looking forward to what's gonna be the status of that as far as how it'll actually address the future needs related to the Gateway Project. And I, I do know right now there's gonna be issues with retreat, and there's also issues as far as just how things are gonna be planned. And I'll leave it at that for tonight, because I know we'll be discussing this further at the next planning commission meeting. And thank you for everything.
Great, thank you, Jim. Do we have anyone else?
Seeing for any last public comment? Seeing none.
Okay, so we're gonna move into council and staff reports. And so next we will receive an update from Andrea Starvatsky, our financial director, on the finance, financial forecast of the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. And I think it's kind of mean that we made it wait till the end to give us all the numbers. Probably should have the numbers at the beginning of the meeting while we're fresh. All right, thank you, Andrea.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm gonna provide an update for our city financial activity through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. I will share my screen for a PowerPoint presentation. Okay, just making sure that you all can see that. Okay, great. Thank you. So within your packets, there are various breakouts for attachment, starting on page sixty-five, which include our current fund balance activity, followed by a breakout of select summary revenues and expenditures for select funds that we include in the packet, then also various tracking reports. And before getting into some of the details of the different revenue areas that I'll be highlighting, the reason that I am walking through these, the handful of revenue sources and where we're at year to date is that they comprise a large portion of our city's budget, and they also can be used as indicators of the economic impacts of COVID nineteen. So for instance, our sales tax revenue is about sixteen percent of our general fund revenues. The same goes for our transactions and use tax. And for our TOT or transient occupancy tax, that is about nine percent of our total general fund revenues. For our enterprise funds, we highlight water and wastewater, as those are mainly consumer drive revenues. For our water service revenues, that's about ninety-nine percent of that particular fund's revenue source. And for our wastewater revenues, that's about ninety-two percent of that fund's revenue source. And going back to that general fund component, for those three sources highlighted, that is about forty-one percent in total of our general fund revenues for our city. So starting off, several significant concern reassurances related to fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and some of these were the similar concerns that we had back at our Q1 review for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. So related to water and wastewater, tracking consumption levels compared to the same time in fiscal year twenty twenty-one and to pre-pandemic levels, the water and wastewater consumption levels still have not returned back to that baseline to pre-pandemic. And why do we care about this? Well, our consumer, our water and wastewater revenues are consumer based. So if there's a decline in consumption, there's a potential for decline in revenues for our city. As far as another concern with our supply chain disruption and the impact of that, looking at issues with being able to move goods from their point of origin to their end location, there have been some delays. And if those supplies are difficult to procure or not available for citizens to purchase, this can impact both our sales tax and our transactions use tax revenues. We're also still seeing that consumers are experiencing increased prices of goods due to inflation and increased demand. And then currently, CPI or Consumer Price Index, year over year, is about four point four percent. We'll continue to monitor these as they could impact our revenues and our expenditures for the city of Arcata. And on the expenditure side, year to date, I have not seen any large change orders for our capital projects or have seen any indication that our goods or services are difficult to procure related to our third-party relationships or our vendor contracts so far. But we'll come back at mid-year and update the council if there are any negative impacts that need to be adjusted for at mid-year. And as far as some of those reassurances for the supply chain disruption, we are continuing to see sales tax and transaction use tax come in at or above projections for this budget year. And the same with our TOT hotel tax is just another positive item that we're seeing as part of our general fund revenues and tracking against our projected budget. So within the packet, we've consistently included a tracking sheet for both our sales tax and our transaction use tax revenues. And this is highlighting where our actual revenues are year to date compared to what the city forecasted. And then also comparing to what our third-party consultant, HGL, projected at the beginning of this fiscal year. Right now, for our sales tax revenues, we're currently exceeding our projected budget by about twelve percent or a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And within your council packet, but I don't have displayed here, we also included fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen as a baseline for pre-pandemic levels for this revenue source. And when looking back at that, we're, we are also exceeding our twenty nineteen sales tax revenues by about a sixteen percent increase overall. I'm gonna move on to our transactions use tax revenues as well, and then discuss some of the drivers between sales tax and transaction use tax for the increases that we're seeing. Once again, a chart for actual revenues year to date versus city projected, and then looking back to pre-pandemic levels. So year to date, we are tracking at about a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars greater than what was initially projected for transactions use tax revenues, or about fourteen percent. And when comparing back to our pre-pandemic levels, this is also tracking higher at about twenty-one percent overall. There are various drivers causing both the sales tax and the transaction use tax revenues to increase compared to budget or compared to the same time last year, rather. Two of the industry categories that we evaluate with our sales tax consultants are consistent across both sales tax and transactions use tax. And those happen to be our restaurants and hotels category. For Arcata, that is mostly our restaurants. And comparing year over year, we're seeing an increase in that revenue source by about thirty-two percent when it comes to sales tax. And some of the drivers for that were that this was one of the hardest hit industries going into the pandemic as far as having dine-in options. And we're seeing, not with the most recent resurgence of COVID, but previous quarters where the restaurants are able to offer dine-in services and foot traffic is increasing, driving some of the increased revenues for sales tax and transactions use tax. And then the other industry category is fuel and service. Once again, we're seeing an increase in both the sales tax and the transactions use tax side of about forty-six percent when comparing year over year. And part of this too was this was one of the harder hit areas with decreased consumption. This tax is mostly comprised of gasoline sales. So if you can imagine during the pandemic, consumption was decreased as travel decreased at the onset. And travel related to work or commuting as well also decreased. And those are just two of the main areas. We'll continue to look at these two revenue sources for potential increases with the potential of upward revisions for budget at mid-year. And just to continue evaluating, I would expect, based off of what we're seeing from our consultants, that we will upward revise and we'll continue to evaluate. There is a correlation as well. If we're seeing consumer prices increase, that we would expect sales tax and transactions use tax also increase. Maybe not by the percentages that we're seeing here, but as something a factor in for future projections for these two areas. And our last general fund revenue impacted area is our transient occupancy tax. So once again, we can include a, a chart within the council packet comparing where we're at year to date compared to the same time period and prior year. And that packet also include, and within the packet includes twenty nineteen pre-pandemic levels. So this was the one revenue area that I see that's increasing greater than what was expected per budget at about two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars year to date. And if comparing that to the same period prior year, that's about a fifty-nine percent increase of where we were at the same time last year for, at December of twenty twenty. When comparing that back to pre-pandemic levels in twenty nineteen, there's a similar increase, a little bit lower, about fifty percent in TOT. So when looking through drivers to understand why this is taking place, we did look at the large hotel or motel operator data for Arcata as far as occupancy goes. So we have data through September thirtieth for stays. And compared to twenty twenty, we only saw about a four percent increase in total occupancy. So that is part driver, purely speculative on my part, is that I believe the costs are increasing for our operators as well for what they're charging for an average night stay, which helps explain some of the revenue increase for TOT. But that is some of the data I'm looking at when trying to evaluate, why are we seeing such a huge increase in TOT for this time period? We also looked at where occupancy levels were for just Q1. And right now, that's at about eighty-three percent on average, which means eighty-three percent of available beds are, are let out or occupied at any given time for the nine thirty twenty twenty-one data. So that kind of wraps up where we're at with our general fund revenues and some of the areas that are tracking greater than what we had initially projected out budget-wise. My next slide is a breakdown of our water and wastewater revenues. So this is a chart also included in the packet, comparing our water service revenues year to date compared to the same time period last year. And as far as where we're at, we, once again, we are seeing consumption decreases across our customer classifications for commercial and residential compared to the same time period in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. But what I did want to point out when comparing the different data sets is that we are in year two of our previously adopted five-year rate increases. So one and a half percent for water is included in our revenues and revenue projections. And then a ten percent increase on our, basically our service fee revenue for wastewater was enacted to fund our operational costs and capital projects. Our water went into place on our first year, July first of twenty twenty. And then wastewater went into effect on January first of twenty twenty-one. So when comparing the two different data sets, it won't be until my next reporting out to council that we'll see kind of an apples-to-apples comparison where we're actually seeing two different periods where we're comparing that had those rate increases included for both the water and the wastewater service revenues. So looking at the water service revenues, you'll see there's a decrease of about eighty-four thousand year to date. Water service revenues are on track compared to where we're at budget-wise. So we expect to be about fifty percent of the way through what we have for projected revenues. We are there. But both in September and November of twenty twenty, we had a large inflows of connection fee revenue. So this is what is driving those two larger differences that you're seeing on the screen, the seventeen thousand in September and then the ninety-eight thousand in November. So our normal consumer-based revenue is on track. We will continue to look at the connection fee revenue as we move into mid-year to evaluate, to see if any downward revisions will be needed. Once again, we're on track. But we are not where we were at the same time last year for that particular revenue source. And that can come in if we have really large projects that happen all at once. One fiscal year can look very skewed compared to another. So just in comparison, in fiscal year twenty twenty, at the same point in time, we had brought in about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in connection fee revenue. And where we're at today is about twenty-one thousand. And once again, it's project-based. This could change if we have large projects coming in from January first of twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. But we'll continue to evaluate. And also for additional revenue sources, which I brought up at our, our last touch point, and we are actually expecting to receive this month, the city applied for our State Water Resources Control Board Water Reirage Program, which is funded through ARPA or American Rescue Plan Act, received through the state of California. We are expecting about eighty-four thousand dollars to come in, which will be additional revenues coming into our water fund that will be applied directly to our delinquent water customer accounts, which were negatively impacted by COVID nineteen based off of the guidelines that they set forth. And we also anticipate, by the time we report out to council for mid-year, to be able to provide with estimated revenues for wastewater, we will be completing that application as soon as it becomes available for the delinquent wastewater customer accounts. And with that, overall outlook remains positive for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. I would say overall, looking citywide, we're on track revenue-wise and expenditure-wise as the offset. And we'll come to council at mid-year for our budget review shortly. We'll be meeting with department heads and compiling the information for that mid-year adoption and any changes that will need to be brought forth to council as part of that overall review. But I'm gonna stop and see if there are any questions from the council, and I thank you for your time.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm talking and no one's hearing me. Maybe that's a good thing. I was just saying thank you, Andrea. And if anyone has any questions for Andrea, why don't you just go ahead and unmute and ask her?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thanks so much to Andrea. I feel like you really bring a level of fiscal responsibility and transparency to our, our bookkeeping that, you know, wasn't there before you came here. And I just really appreciate your competence. And it, you do so much to make our budget clear and on track. And I'm just really grateful for that. Helps me sleep at night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I see you get thumbs up, supporting what Brett said. So thank you for that. And thank you for waiting many hours to present it to us.
Thank you.
So having said that, we'll go next to a presentation by our senior planner, Joe Matier, regarding Senate Bill Nine, a new state law that establishes housing and subdivision regulations within single-family residential zones. So thank you, Joe, for hanging on all this time. And go start whenever you're ready.
No worries. Thank you, Mayor and council members. Appreciate being here. Lot of housing items on the agenda tonight. So this is just another tool that the city will be able to use here. And we thought this would be nice to bring forward to the council and the, the public members, because there's been a lot of talk. Senate Bill Nine was signed by the governor in September and became effective January first. It's a housing bill that has two portions to it. It's a statewide concern, of course, that the city has, I mean, the, the state has identified. And they want to require jurisdictions to allow no more than two dwelling units on a residential zone parcel. And also, there's another provision about a subdivision, parcel map subdivision, where you can create up to two separate parcels. And these are intended to, again, increase the housing opportunities for communities. Arcata already does a lot of things to promote housing. And so, you know, we're, it's gonna be interesting to see really how much this, the citizens are gonna utilize these provisions, because there may be some benefits that are there. It's certainly gonna require a little bit more tracking of city staff and reporting to the state on these items. The housing law, part of Senate Bill Nine, it is separate than the existing state law on accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. So our community members want, might want to look at those provisions. So our community members want, might want to look at those provisions of the A D U and the junior A D U laws as opportunities to increase housing and maybe some rent on their property and stuff like that. But certainly our staff is going to work with our community on either implementing those state laws, the tools we have in our existing land use code, and of course, the Senate Bill nine. These are mandated approvals that are considered ministerial. I know your council had some discussions on discretionary review and ministerial. This is ministerial review. There's no public hearing that's afforded to these development projects through the Senate Bill nine. Because it's ministerial, there's no environmental review on these projects. They are not required to do environment review according to the California Environmental Quality Act. Projects located in the coastal zone may require coastal development permit, but there is no public hearing associated with that. The, as I mentioned, there's some reporting requirements through the annual housing report that we do. And then some also tracking, and I'll get into a little bit of that. The, the law is, it's not a carte blanche on any zone parcel in Arcata. It's limited to single family residential zone parcels. And it also establishes baseline criteria. So that some of those baseline criterias for both the housing development projects of two units or no more than two units. And the lot split cannot be located on primary agricultural land, hazardous areas that might be a flood zone, earthquake, environmentally sensitive habitat, habitat areas, creek zones, repairing areas, wetlands. And it also includes historic resources as well. So any of the parcels that have the designated landmark historic designation would not be available for that. Of course, you know, we want to use what is available in our existing code and supplement any of the state code to promote housing in our community. So we'll work with any property owner on finding a path forward to getting what they need to meet their needs. The, what's nice about this code, this state law is that it doesn't allow demolition of any rent controlled parcels, housing for affordability. And even there's a one, one provision of the state law that talks about when tenants have lived in the property for three years, you know, we don't want to relocate or dislocate those people on that. The, the city can use objective standards in our review of these housing developments projects. And these objective, objective standards are similar to our zoning code development standards. It could be a building height of 35 feet, floor area ratio of 50% of the lot area. And these objective standards have to be easily identifiable, verifiable. And then there's no personal judgment in, in reviewing it, similar to a building permit. You have two by four construction, that's what the code says. You submit your plans and you have that two by four construction, you're good to go. So some of our development standards already have built into our land use code, already have these objective standards there in place. When like a standard such as in a design review where it says that it's harmonious and compatible with the existing neighborhood or the existing building, that is not an objective standard. There's too much discretion in that, so that would not be permitted under review of those types of projects. And the objective, objective standards can limit some types of development, but the state law builds in a kind of a safety valve that indicates that if the objective standards do not make it feasible to develop the two dwelling units on your property, then the city has to have opportunity to kind of make provisions to allow up to two 800 square foot dwelling units each. So that's something that's kind of new where we're going to have to do a little record keeping. People might question, well, how do they get that? They don't meet the standards here. And so we just have to do kind of internal record keeping on that aspect of it. The state law has provisions for adjustments of the setback area. Of course, parking is one of those things that the state and our community is looking at trying to reduce. So there's provisions for reduced parking. The housing units, it's interesting that what we don't see in the A D U and the junior A D U laws, this one here does build in the mechanism that requires that housing developments developed through the provisions of the Senate Bill nine have to have occupancy of 30 days or more. So that takes out the speculation of the short stay vacation rentals, Airbnb's and stuff like that. Now that's another record keeping, you know, administrative thing that the city is going to have to do and track over time. For, in regards to the lot splits, those are subdivisions that are required to meet the subdivision map act, except as allowed through the Senate Bill nine. Again, it's a ministerial permit. They do have to submit an application for a subdivision. Again, it's just the residential, it's limited to residential zones for single family. And one of the provisions they have in Senate Bill nine is that the, the lot sizes have to be similar. So you begin with the 10,000 square foot lot. The smallest lot you can create out of the 10,000 square foot would be 40% or 4,000 square feet. And it does have a limit to the minimum size that you could have on a parcel. 1,200 square feet is one of the limits identified in the Senate Bill nine. So you'd have to have a 3,000 square foot parcel to be able to qualify for that 60, 40 split, you know, 1,200 and then if the 1,800 square foot parcel to, to utilize Senate Bill nine. What's interesting is that you cannot further subdivide a parcel. If you had that 10,000 square foot parcel and you created the 4,000 and 6,000 square foot parcel, you cannot come along and further subdivide that 6,000 square foot parcel into another, you know, two units there. So that's another record, record keeping mechanism. And another interesting aspect that's kind of unusual is that you cannot subdivide a adjacent parcel if you used the, the same property owner, used the benefits of Senate Bill nine or their agent on their adjacent parcel. It's kind of one of those interesting nuances on that. But again, I mentioned the subdivision map act is required for that. And then they also added some provisions to extend the, the expiration date of the here, of the tentative maps. But, you know, I think it's important for the community to realize that, you know, I don't think it's going to be a huge rush to do this. We already have many provisions built into our existing land use code. Arcata has already kind of looked at different things that would be minimizing housing opportunities. And so we, we've already tried to address this. I think this is probably a state legislature reactionary from other jurisdictions that are trying to keep things out. But we're certainly going to, you know, utilize the full tools of Senate Bill nine, follow the law, help our community out there with any development projects. I know that Director Loyah has a few closing statements as well, but I'd be happy to answer any question the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead and do your closing statements, David, and then we can ask questions?
Yeah, sure. And because of the hour, I'll just make this super, super quick. Joe, Joe played good cop, I'm going to play bad cop. The, the, you know, the council did write a letter opposing S P nine when it was put forward. This is small lot subdivision. It's, it's a mixed bag. There's some good stuff in it. There's some, some, you know, potential cautionary tale. So I just want to paint dystopian future for you real quick and, and put a, a plug in for local zoning. So S B nine small lot subdivision, as Joe had mentioned, was a reaction to the statewide projections for expected production falling way short of the need for these 1.8 million housing units by 2025. What S B nine would allow you to do is to take in the upper left hand corner here, single family lot and maybe turn your building into an A D U on the bottom and single family residence on the top, primary unit on the top. And then do a subdivision so that you took this one parcel and you created two. That second parcel could also do two units. So now you have four units on a property that was originally planned and zoned for one or maybe two. What does this look like in practice? Well, let's look at the Westwood for a moment here. There's Strongberg Roberts, we're going to zoom in on the Roberts. And look at these houses, there's plenty of room in the back for maybe putting in an A D U. All these parcels have lots of big open spaces in their backyards. These are about 7,000 square foot parcels. Well, you can imagine if this A D U was here and you decided, hey, I'm going to put a subdivision line between each one of these. And then I wanted to create accessory dwelling units on each of those new two subdivisions. You now have four housing units. You didn't have to provide additional parking. There's no provision for in a typical subdivision where you would provide for all the infrastructure that's necessary you know, to, to accommodate this additional growth. And furthermore, it's exempt from CEQA and it's exempt from public comment. So the reason why I point this out, the reason why I'm painting this dystopian future is because, you know, our community does need housing. Housing is a huge push right now. We've heard it on both projects that we heard tonight. Housing of all income levels. And, you know, when the city adopted its housing element, it identified these core areas, these opportunity zones in the Valley West in the St. Louis area downtown. And what we're working on right now is the Creamery District and Gateway area. And it's just, I just want to re emphasize that it's really important for us to take control of our local zoning to implement these plans to ensure that we have adequate area for the market to, to develop and to build, to provide for those housing needs, because if we don't plan for it, we're going to end up with unplanned growth. So that's my dystopian future bad cop presentation piece to this. And so then if you have any questions about the technical detail, Joe would be happy to answer those.
Thank you both for the presentation. I know we do have a lot of people that are interested in how that works. So I think that that's really good to get out there. And yeah, I, I know it's a mixed bag. There are cities that are definitely teaming up to oppose it. So do we have any questions or comments for either Joe or David? I mean, it kind, it is what it is, right? So I mean, you're updating us, we're, we're hearing you, so.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll be bringing forward an ordinance to implement this so that we have those objective standards that Joe had referenced. We'll be developing that early in this year. It is in effect right now. And so if someone comes forward with a project, we would rely on, as Joe had mentioned, the standards that we have in our, our land use code and whatever provisions there are in state law to, to get them through the process. But I think it's important for us to identify, you know, how, how these projects would, would develop in our, our community.
Okay, well, thank you. It looks like we don't have any questions or comments regarding that. So, but thanks for the presentation and the laid hour. We appreciate it. Okay, so that brings us to other council and staff reports. I'm expecting these will probably be light as it's been the holidays. And I think most of our assignments were probably postponed over the holidays. But if anyone has anything to report, please jump in.
Quickly, there is an Arcata Chamber of Commerce mixer tomorrow night at Redwood Racks. It is in person, masked, big open area, open windows and whatnot. And the awards dinner is on February 19th and Senator McQuillan will be there. And yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Matthews. Anyone else?
Yes, want to reiterate my request for an agenda item about public comment, public process that we do for all the projects in the city. And also we'd like to request another agenda item to consider directing the economic development committee to develop, or at least, you know, start working on an economic development strategic plan. Some of the responses I've received from staff, it doesn't seem like they actually have a strategic plan for the city. We have a lot of good things that we're working on, but it doesn't, you know, I don't think we actually have a strategy. So I think that would be something that would be useful and beneficial to the community.
Okay, those are great ideas, Councilmember Watson. Thank you so much for that.
Yeah, and I, I, especially with, with your first one, I think it's just would be great for us to just review what our outreach processes are and just, just kind of go, go through that as a team. We, we have been getting a lot of feedback. And so I feel like the community would just appreciate that we take the time to do that. So, yeah. Is there anything else? Okay, with that, we will be adjourned. So thank you all very much.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.